Welcome to the Raleigh Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday night, April 23, 2018, at 5:45 PM, Town Hall 139 Main Street in Raleigh. First order of business, I'll call a meeting to order. And to remind everyone, and I'll remind them again later, this meeting is being video and audio recorded on Raleigh Community Media. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are going into executive session. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, MCOP, Local 360 pursuant to State Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3. Chairman calls for a motion to go into executive session for the following purpose: to discuss collective bargaining strategy pursuant to the State Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, MCOP, Local 360, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Board of Selectmen and to return to open session. A selectman makes the motion, seconded by another member.
Give you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. The chairman calls for roll call vote.
Hi, Robert Smith.
I, Joseph Perry.
I, Cliff Deers.
I, Dave Peterson.
Hi, Bob Mary.
Okay, we're in executive session. We're back in a regular session. And I'm going to change, make a change in the agenda. And we're going to new business. And under new business, we, number one, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Mass Coalition of Police, Local 360. And if we could have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Raleigh and the Mass Coalition of Police, Local 360.
Give you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement between the Town of Raleigh and the Mass Coalition of Police, Local 360. All those in favor say aye.
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 David, does that door need to be opened?
Oh, yes.
Okay. We have, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on a liquor license application for a wine and malt beverage package store for 21 Main Street filed by Andy Sonny, Inc., Principals Armdeep V. Patel and Vasheben J. Patel. Chairman Perry reads the notice of the public hearing. The Town of Raleigh, Notice of Public Hearing, Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, that the Raleigh Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Raleigh Town Hall 139 Main Street, Raleigh, Mass, upon the application of Andy Sonny, Inc., Principals Armdeep V. Patel and Vasheben J. Patel of 220 High Street, Ipswich, on an application for a Section 15 package store license. Business is located at 21 Main Street, consisting of a 2,144 square foot building. Anyone wishing to comment should attend this hearing. Written comments will be accepted. Joseph Perry, Chairman, Raleigh Board of Selectmen, April 13, 2018. This was in the Daily News. I'll call the applicants forward. You can just...
Might be better.
Yeah.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney with Seaside Leo Solutions, address of 111 Main Street in Gloucester, Massachusetts. I am here on behalf of Andy Sonny Incorporated. The Principals of Andy Sonny should be here shortly. We spoke this afternoon, they confirmed they were going to be here. So hopefully they arrive as I'm speaking. That being said, in your packet, you'll see it's a request for a transfer of an existing malt and wine license currently owned by EZ LLC. They've since closed their store. This is going to be used by Andy Sonny over at the Raleigh Smoke Shop, which is about half a mile down the road. The manager, Mr. Savalia, he has, he and his family, including the Principals of Andy Sonny, have a lot of experience owning convenience stores. They own a handful throughout the Cape Ann area and actually spreading out all the way as far as Athol in Massachusetts. They're a very upstanding, hardworking family. They've done very well for themselves, picking up convenience stores and making them nice, clean, reputable establishments. This is a natural fit for the Raleigh Smoke Shop. They've actually had the people from EZ bring over their coolers. They have this really nice built-in cooler system, and they actually, as part of the transfer application, the purchase and sale agreement, bought the coolers along with it, and those have been retrofitted into the Smoke Shop already and are a week or two out from completion at this point. They're waiting for the application to hopefully be approved, then okayed by the state, and then they should be ready to go. You'll note in the floor plan that the store has one main entrance and exit, so there's a sole point of entry and exit for customers. There are, of course, emergency exits out the back. However, to get to those, you have to get past a door that is within eyesight of the main counter. And the floor plan proposed, is labeled Proposed Floor Plan. Right now, there are some large cigar shelves that are actually being moved toward the back of the store so that there'll be a clear line of sight from the cashier to the entire case, a cooler case for the alcoholic beverages. The low shelves will remain in the center when you first walk in, so that way whoever's working the cash register will be able to see the exit, will be able to see the display cases, and will be able to see the wine and beer, all from one location.
We did have some concerns, and one of the, from the Board of Health, the Health Department is concerned about the policies, procedures in place for checking identification to verify if purchases age before sale. In 2016 and 2017, Raleigh Convenience sold tobacco products to minors. The proprietors did attend a Board of Health meeting after the first violation to discuss the issue. Attached is the outline they provided regarding internal procedures to prevent the situation from happening again. I have included the information regarding the two compliance check violations for the sale of tobacco to minors conducted by the health community's Tobacco Control Program, who works with the Board of Health at a local level.
So, Mr. Chair, I had not been made aware of that prior to tonight. What I would say in response is that I think one of, one of the reasons you'd be able to kind of rest assured that this won't happen with the sale of alcoholic beverages is that they are bringing in Mr. Savalia, who has experience in convenience stores with liquor sales in them, and he'll be the one managing the license, and so he'll be able to bring some expertise and his experience successfully running other convenience stores with a beer and wine component to it. Again, I apologize, my clients have not made it here. I have a fear they may think it was 6:30, just based on something I overheard in the office today. That being said, I'd certainly be willing to speak with them and provide you something if that was going to, the vote was going to hinge on providing some assurance that satisfied the chair or this board that what's happened in the past regarding the tobacco sales will not be happening with the alcohol sales. That's certainly something I'll be able to discuss with my client if necessary.
Any questions, Governor? I also, from the Kirk Baker, the town planner, I have reviewed the submitted application materials for a beer/wine retail store to be located at 21 Main Street. Excuse me. This site is zone, Central Zoning District, send the, and is the site of a previous retail use, retail sale of fishing equipment, for which the existing parking area was of sufficient capacity. Per the building inspector, the proposed change between retail uses does not qualify as a change of use. In the Central District, does allow by right the operation of a small retail sales establishment. In that regard, I don't see any provision necessitating any further review by the planning board. Any questions by the boards?
Have there any problems with other establishments that they own with regards to tobacco or alcohol?
So, I can only speak, I've represented a few members of the family. They have Sonny's Variety out in Gloucester. They also just picked up Schooners in Essex. And to my knowledge, there have been no issues at either of those locations. I wouldn't know specifically as to the various other convenience stores that this family owns, and how wide a net you'd like me to cast as far as how many stores they happen to have between all of them. But the ones that I've been involved with myself, I have not had any, received any word of any violations of tobacco or alcohol sales. To be fair, Sonny Variety does not sell alcohol, only tobacco. But the Schooners market does have a beer and wine component.
Thank you. Is there anyone present at the meeting who would like to speak on the application? Members of the Board of Selectmen? If the board is satisfied with the application and there are no further questions of the applicant, the chairman can call for motion to close the public hearing.
Give you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. After the board closes the public hearing, the board discusses the application and votes. Any discussion?
I have no problem.
I have no problem.
Motion?
I give you a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application. Those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll try to have a public comment from 6:15 to 6:20. Okay, let's go down to general business. General business number one, we have a request from Jane White of the Raleigh Girl Scouts to hold annual bridging and award ceremony on the Town Common on June 15, 2018, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The fire chief and police chief both raised questions regarding the number of attendees in the parking plan for the bridging ceremony. Assistant Town Administrator Amy Leighton has reached out to Jane White, asking for a response to their questions. However, a response was not received in time for tonight's meeting. This agenda item will be discussed at a future meeting once more information regarding the event is available. So we'll put that one off for now. And reschedule that for another meeting. Okay, we have, general business number two, we have a revised request from the Parks and Recreation Committee to hold T-ball practices and games on the Town Common. On, at the April 9, 2018 meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to grant permission for the Town Common to be used for T-ball Mondays through Thursdays, beginning April 10 and ending on June 24. T-ball practice and games will also take place on Fridays during that period of time, April 10 through June 24. The Board of Selectmen should vote to amend its previous vote to include permission to use the Town Common for T-ball on Fridays.
I give you the motion to approve that amendment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend our previous vote to allow T-ball on Fridays. All those in favor say aye. Aye. General business number three, we have a request from Parks and Recreation Committee Vice Chairman Tim Southall to accept a donation from Dan Lyons of Riverfront Landscaping to clean out poison sumac, poison ivy undergrowth at Iris Park. Dan Lyons of Riverfront Landscaping contacted Tim Southall, offering to donate his time to help clean out poison sumac and poison ivy undergrowth around the playing fields at Iris Park. The town requires that any volunteers sign a consent and release form. Tim Southall has a copy of this form and will ensure that it is signed by Mr. Lyons and any other volunteers. The board needs to vote to accept this donation.
I give you the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the donation from Dan Lyons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. General business number four, request to lift the hiring freeze for cemetery seasonal laborer positions. Board of Cemetery Commissioners is requesting the Board of Selectmen to lift the freeze for the two seasonal laborer positions. This is an annual request.
Give that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to lift the hiring freeze for the cemetery seasonal laborer positions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a request from the Friends of the Library to place signs promoting the annual book sale on town property in a banner on the Town Common backstop. The Friends of the Raleigh Public Library are holding a big, a book sale in May to raise funds for the library. They are requesting permission to put several signs on various town properties and a banner at the Town Common. The signs will be the same size, signs as used last year. They are 24 inches by 18 inches, red with white print. They would be located in front of the library on Main Street, in front of the town annex on Central Street, in front of the water department on Central Street, on the island at Route 133 in Bradford Street, on the island at the beginning of Railroad Ave, on the island in the driveway at Iris Park. The Friends of the Raleigh Public Library are asking to be granted permission to put up the signs and banner this year from April 29 to May 6. They are also asking for a blanket permission to post the signs every year, the Sunday before the book sale.
Give you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the request from the Raleigh, from the Friends of the Library to place signs promoting the annual book sale on town property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. General business number six, review road opening permits from Twin Hill Farms LLC, John Sullivan, to open 42 Newbury Road to install a new water main extension. A road opening permit was signed off by the staff on all the location listed above. We have our procedure to do that, and we're just providing notice to the board. Thank you. General business number seven, we have a letter of resignation from Planning Board Associate Member Gene Petrillo. Towning Board, Towning Planner Kirk Baker forwarded a letter from Gene Petrillo, resigning from the Planning Board effective May 18, 2018. Dear Chairman Thornton, after much thought and careful reflection, I have decided to resign my position as Associate Member of the Raleigh Planning Board. Due to the increased family and personal responsibilities, I feel I cannot continue in my position. I will be leaving my position effective May 18, 2018. I want to thank the Planning Board for allowing me to be an Associate Member for all these years. With my two full terms and four or five years as an Associate Member, I have been on the Board for almost 15 years. I have enjoyed my many years with the wonderful Board. I also want to thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing me as Associate Member. I hope I have measured up to their trust in me. Thank you to the Board. Sincerely yours, Joan Petrillo.
Give you that motion, Mr. Chairman. Give you the question.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded with regret.
With regrets.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye.
Send a letter or...
Okay, I just want to say, she has been a great planning board member. It's a shame to see her go, it really is. She's going to be missed. Yeah, you did, right. She was a great, great lady.
Regrets.
Okay, we'll have public comment open for the next five minutes. Okay, let's go to old business, number one. We have an update on the fire station and police station addition targets. The guardrails are up on the roadway to the ball fields. This week, the contractor will continue working on the following: excavation of the stormwater infiltration bases, excavating the foundations, pouring concrete foundations for both buildings, installing the underground plumbing, and installing the underground electrical. Dave, comment?
That sounds good. The only thing I do want to say is it's, parking over there for the ball fields is extremely tight, and people that are taking their kids over to play should make every effort to park as close to each other as possible. There is going to be a shortage of parking on days when they got three or four games going at once. There was a game over there on Saturday, Triton JV was playing, and it was pretty crowded. So just be aware, and the playground is open, but just be careful when there are small children over there. Don't let them climb into the fenced in areas or anything like that, so. Other than that, it's coming good with the good weather.
That's good to hear. Any other comment? Okay, moving on to old business, number two, award engineering services contract to Meridian Associates for design services for the development of the expansion of veterans' fields at the rear of 221 Main Street. We revised the scope of work and solicited four new quotes for engineering services to design of the expansion of the playing fields at rear of 221 Main Street. One response was received from Meridian Associates for $31,500. The scope of their work will be to complete one, schematic design of two Little League fields, including dugouts, portable bleachers, and backstops, with two full-size youth soccer fields in the Little League outfield. The schematic design will also include an expansion of the existing gravel parking lot located at 215 R. Main Street, adjacent to the Pond Grove School. Design in, number two, design and engineering for one of the Little League fields for Phase One of the project. Number three, specifications for the procurement of irrigation and well installation companies. Number four, wetlands delineation. And number five, permitting. We are asking the Board of Selectmen to award the engineering services contract for the expansion of veterans' field to Meridian Associates in the amount of $31,500.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson.
Keep in mind that $31,500 is out of the CPA funds that were allocated a few years back. There's about $220,000 in the account right now. This $31,500 will come out of that, and it's in the process, and we hope to have enough money to at least design and build one Little League field, as well as have the schematic designs for the rest. We may need to go back for more money, depending on what those construction costs are going to be. But, once again, with the good weather here, and we've met with Meridian, and they're moving ahead on the design process, so hopefully it'll move fairly quickly at this point.
Very good. Okay, so we have...
Give you the motion, Mr. Chairman, to award the...
Oh, yes.
The contract to Meridian Associates for $31,500.
Motion has been made and seconded to award the engineering services contract to Meridian Associates for $31,500. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think we can get into the new business area. And we have taken care of new business number one. Number two, approve the assignment of contract from Crack Sealing, Inc. to Seal Coating, Inc. Last year, Crack Sealing, Inc. was awarded the Highway/Roadway Materials and Services Contract for Item Six, Fiber-Reinforced Crack Seal. We received a letter that Crack Sealing, Inc. has entered into an asset purchase agreement with Seal Coating, Inc. of Braintree. As part of the terms of the agreement, all Crack Sealing, Inc. active customer contracts are being assigned to Seal Coating, Inc. Highway Supervisor Patrick Snow has reviewed the letter from Crack Sealing and has recommended that the Selectmen approve the assignment of this contract to Seal Coating, Inc. The Selectmen must vote on whether to accept the assignment of the highway contract to Seal Coating, Inc., and to authorize Chairman Perry to sign the enclosed letter. If approved, a contract extension will also be sent to Seal Coating, Inc. for work to be completed in 2018.
Give you the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the assignment of contract from Crack Sealing, Inc. to Seal Coating, Inc. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to new business, number three, discuss scheduling a date for a continued April 30 town meeting, or for a second town meeting if needed. Depending upon how the votes on the annual town meeting budget are approved, we may need to either continue the annual town meeting or hold a new town meeting. The suggested dates for a continued or backup date for a second town meeting is either June 11, 2018, or June 18, 2018. If for some reason we don't have an approved, imbalanced budget at the end of the annual town meeting, we will need to continue the town meeting. If two of the three towns don't pass the current Triton budget, the school committee will be resubmitting a revised budget after their scheduled May 16 meeting. If we don't have a revised budget amount appropriated, then we need to schedule a new town meeting. The Triton School Committee has a meeting scheduled for May 16. In either case, we will need time to work on balancing the town's budget.
What day of the week are those two dates?
Mondays.
Mondays.
Successive Mondays. Brings you to, you still have one more.
You still have one more Monday left in June after that.
Does June 11th give you enough time to do?
There is one note. The accountant is going to be away that day and if I need her at a town meeting, you know, she won't be available June 11th.
So you'd rather have June 18th?
I would prefer it. It's up to the board, but...
Yeah, I'd like a motion, make it June 18th.
June 18th.
June 18th.
Motion?
Okay, would you vote? Yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that if we need it, we will schedule the meeting for June 18th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, could you just call the vote on that? We have a motion by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Pierce.
Yes. All those in favor of having the continued or backup date on June 18th, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
New business number four, to assign motions for the 2030, for the April 30th, 2018 annual and special town meetings. The board needs to divide up the motions for all of the Board of Selectmen articles on the annual and special town meeting warrants. Attach copies and we'll go through those. Not on the warrant, but must be moved, a special town meeting to suspend the reading of the warrant authorizing non-resident town department heads to speak during the town meeting and the annual town meeting to suspend the reading of the warrant authorizing non-resident town department heads to speak during the town meeting. And as Chair, I would like to handle those.
Please do it.
I will, as Chair, I would take care of doing the suspending the reading of the warrant and the authorizing the non-residents during the town meeting.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, your warrant is actually with your 7 o'clock appointment. So usually we go through each article, take some time to do this.
Yep.
So I don't know if you want to do that now or wait till later.
Want to wait till...
Yep.
Okay.
So if that's agreeable, too?
So I have you down for those three on both annual...
I'll take care of those.
Yes, but then we have a lot of other motions.
Right. Okay. How are we doing? Larry, your honor. Welcome Larry Berger of Pink Incorporated. We have a Pink and Company, I'm sorry, to discuss the following: Pine Grove School building project items. We have a letter of recommendation, number 12, letter of recommendation, number 13, on landscape. Letter 12 is dealing with signs. We also will discuss storing Pine Grove School teachers' summer deliveries in the town hall auditorium, placing approximately 10 40-foot storage containers on the town property near the school, and an update on the project. Pine Grove Principal and the teachers would like to, they will get summer deliveries of packages from FedEx and UPS and where they will not have the ability to receive them at the school, they would like to have them delivered here to the town hall and they will have somebody to receive the packages. Covered that. Is that pretty much covered?
Yes, it summarizes everything. The first...
Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The first letter of recommendation is a continuation of the non-trade buyout for the Pine Grove School project. It relates to the interior signage. It's letter of recommendation number 12 and the budget that was established at 90% drawing stage was $39,789. The buyout amount that is being requested for award to Back Bay Sign Company is for So there is a savings in that line item.
Any questions?
I'll give you a motion to approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the letter of recommendation, number 12, for signage for Pine Grove School project renovation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Larry, number, letter of recommendation 13.
Yes, the next letter of recommendation, number 13, is for landscaping, turf grasses, plants, unit pavers, and softball field resurfacing, which is reestablishing the softball field to the far end of the school. That will be removed as part of putting in the new leach field as part of the site work package for the project. Again, this is a non-trade buyout and the budget that was established at the 90% drawings was $842,537 and the buyout amount is $802,250. So there is a savings of $40,287 for this particular line item.
I'll give you a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to hear those savings, yes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the letter of recommendation, number 13, for landscaping, turf, grasses, plants, unit pavers, and softball field resurfacing at Pine Grove renovation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I guess we're okay with the storing the Pine Grove? Is that...
The summer delivery. We have not discussed the 40-foot storage containers.
Right. Larry?
Yes, the desire from the contractor is to have some off-site but contiguous to the site, storage of 10 40-foot storage trailers that would contain for the project the entire window package as well as the entire plumbing package and electrical light fixtures so that they're more readily available and they can, you know, facilitate as they catch ahead, not have to wait for deliveries. The hope was that the hayfield on the other side of the existing recreational soccer fields would be available. I understand from talking with Mr. Peterson and Devegan that those are about to go into construction and I know the design portion was just talked about earlier this evening. So, you know, I'm not sure what alternatives there are, but we would love to have that opportunity. The 10 storage trailers would not be there through the entire duration of the project. As the materials got moved out, they would be pulled out and that storage area would diminish in size and need. The site itself will hold some storage for the ongoing day-to-day, but the big packages that are being assembled and about to be delivered or we want to be delivered, we're hard-pressed to find storage and immediate storage. And what that would mean is that we'd have to break the packages down, off-site storage, and then truck them in. And one of the things we want to do is eliminate the amount of ins and outs to that site. I think it'll be beneficial for everybody, plus it'll aid in the speed of getting things completed out there. We've made good progress in this past week with the kids not in school and, you know, we're just hoping to build upon that.
You can store, Larry, all 20 trailers there?
It would only be 10.
20, 10?
10, on that rec site, yes. Excuse me, on the other side of the rec site, 10 could fit there.
Okay. So you would be bringing trailers in and out?
If, without that space, I mean, we will try and work the site to get as many as we can. One of the restrictions, we can't load the existing leaching field because the weight would impact negatively on its performance. So we have to kind of skirt around that area, which is kind of the infield part of the outfield of the existing softball field. But, you know, we do have some areas to store things and over the next couple of days, other trades will start to bring in their storage trailers. They'll have more of their immediate needs, pipe and fittings and things of that nature that they'll be using on a daily basis. But the, you know, in the case of the window manufacturer or the windows, what they want to do is ship in all the frames, all the glass, all, everything associated with that package, and then they'll pull from those trailers as they roll through the phases. And again, the light fixtures would be the same thing. We don't use the entire package right away, but we use just about every type of light through all the phases. And again, there's, you know, there's five phases between now and the end of summer and 2019.
Mr. Chairman, we kind of talked about using the affordable housing lots at the Broad Street property because we can't use the ball field. We're going to hopefully be constructing the new ball field over there. So we decided if it's acceptable to the construction company that if we put the 10 trailers over near the loom pile that was recently put over there and it'd be just a short ride for the contractor to go over and pick up what they need and bring them back, it's about the best we can do. The site is, we're trying to maintain some games over there as well as build the new fields and just a lot of things going on at once. And the best we can offer that's close by is the affordable housing lots for that period of time that they would need those trailers or the bins, the storage containers.
Thank you.
Was that all right with you, Larry? Did you look at that?
I have not had opportunity, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I've not had opportunity to look at that with the contractor, but I can tomorrow.
If you could go take a look at it, I think that's probably where it's going to have to be just because everything else is going on.
And, you know, we'll get the reaction.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, what's the timeframe? How long is this going to be and what season of the, you know, of the year?
Light fixtures would be from, you know, mid-July through, you know, through the summer of 19. The windows, the same thing. Plumbing fixtures, again, it would be the same duration. The amount of the footprint would decrease and depending upon where things were, we might be able to start to pull those back onto site because the other thing that impacts the ability to utilize the front portion of the site is we have all that site work to deal with that in the first summer, if we have trailers out there, we won't be able to get as much done as we're in hopes of doing.
Yeah, take a look at that because we're going to be, hopefully, I keep my fingers crossed when I say this, starting the fields this summer and they're going to take a year to construct those fields and keep off them so that...
Oh, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so if you can look at that, if that works out, it would be the best from the town's point of view.
I will make a point to go with superintendent tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman.
So we should take a vote on the approval?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not sure whether this affects the deliberations or not, but the affordable housing policy parcel that is available for access is also an emergency snow storage deserting site. So I'm not sure if this would possibly have an effect upon that as well as we need to clearly redefined traffic corridor for construction activity of the ball fields as well as counting on the area that those doors or those containers, I think usually they're dual, some of them have dual doors, sometimes they have single hinge ones or whatever. They may need a secondary, right? Or they're a little bit closer with the traffic flow considerations and seasonality to competing uses that are currently employed in that particular parcel. Just FYI.
I think we'll just, you know, put them as close as we can together in one area and then maybe the highway surveyor can go over and take a look and make sure that they don't interfere.
I don't think they need to do more, but I understand what you're talking about, yes.
And they're going to be opening...
Which is at least 10 feet. You know, each leaf would be required 10 foot.
And they're going to open and close during the day and then be closed at night anyway, right? So they're not going to leave them open.
No, not at all. In fact, they'll be, if they're that far off-site, they will be opened, materials removed, and then lock back up.
Maybe if you go over and the contract is agreeable, maybe contact the town administrator and she can set up something with the highway department and have Joe go over. I'll go, one of us will be more willing to go over and make sure that, you know, they're put in a spot where it's least of a problem. And yet, there's a big loop, big traffic loop to come in and out of there along with, we're going to use that field for access to the construction of the ball fields because the parking lot behind Pine Grove is going to be closed off for the summer. So everything is trying to be coordinated. We'll do the best we can. We'll make it one way or the other.
No, I think everybody...
It'll work out.
As they look at what the constraints are, I apologize at the site.
I'm sorry.
We look at the constraints, we'll come up with something.
Yeah, good.
The site would improve in the second summer.
Right.
Because a fair amount will be done this first summer, but I definitely would have it looked at in terms of, you know, potentially, snow storage, should we get severe winter and the access and...
I'll give you a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve putting them over at that site pending coordination with the highway surveyor and whoever else from the town.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the 10 trailers with recommendations from various areas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have an update?
I most certainly do.
Okay.
We had a good first week. We started last Saturday and the duck bank was one of the first pieces of work. We were able to make the tie-ins to the utility pole which we located.
Larry, can you maybe talk into the microphone? I realize the sun is...
Yeah, just trying to.
He's going to adjust it for you.
Sure.
He's easy.
We were able to make the utility, the underground utility runs to one new utility pole that was set by Raleigh Municipal Power. That's at the immediate entrance and then a little south of there, we came in with new conduits for the telephone and data on an existing pole and the duck bank is in and concreted all the way to the location of the transformer pad. Transformer pad will be poured later this week and they are starting to continue that work to the all-purpose room. Inside the building, the asbestos-containing materials have been abated in the all-purpose room and they are fully removed of their equipment, both the all-purpose room and the kitchen. And they're currently cutting the floor to start installing new underground utilities in the kitchen and they'll be working on a similar operation in the all-purpose room after the floor is GPR, which is ground penetrating radar to locate the turnbuckles that tie the building together. They cannot cut through them, so the new conduits to the new electrical room need to run underneath the, on Saturday, the pavement which extends from the rear parking area at the, what will be the second entrance or the primary entrance for the bus loop. That was installed all the way to the last set of doors for the convenience of the town hall meeting as well as to aid with facilitating the deliveries for the cold lunch program.
Thank you very much. I appreciate doing that.
That is in place.
So we'll have a drop-off, we'll be able to get to the gym doors for a drop-off for handicap?
Correct, on hard pavement. It's not stone, it's not gravel, it's asphalt.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome, man. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I would repeat for everybody who has arrived in the last few minutes, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. It is not televised live, but it will be shown on Raleigh Community Media at some other date. We have a 6:45, wow, a 6:45 appointment with the conservation agent Brent Baselak to discuss the draft of Mahaffey Farm Conservation Restriction. Honorable Chairman Perry, the Conservation Commission recently completed their review of the proposed Conservation Restriction, CR, to be held with Essex County Green Belt Associate Association for the Mahaffey Farm at 179 Newbury Road. Town Council participated in the review. The Concom has voted to recommend the draft CR be forwarded to the state for their review in the Division of Conservation Services part of EEA. I would like to present to the Board of Selectmen the portions of the documents which have been a focus of concern in past discussions. Specifically, page eight of the CR, section B, number 13, parking area, and page 11 and 12, section VB, access by the public trails, and memorandum of agreement, page one, section A, number two, and number three. Thanks for consideration of this request. Brent, do you want me to read those areas or...
If you want to take a moment, thank you very much, Brent Baselak, Service Administration Agent, down above. And presenting you the complete documents in the, in an effort to have full transparency so you can perfectly review the entire document, so again, the focus has been on parking trails and those considerations, and so I highlighted the document that has those areas highlighted. As I mentioned, Concom participated in the review, and Town Council also had an agreement that this document is in a current state where it will be submitted to the EEA, which is Conservation Services, and that all of the preceding concerns, items, et cetera, have been reviewed to the satisfaction of both the Town Council and the Conservation Commission. And we're requesting to want to go here before you, and request your also consideration that the micro of this document must be received comments from the state, which will bring it back to us, and we will then have a review, where hopefully we will get to a stage in this process where both Conservation Commission and Board of Selectmen can be confident and sign after we address whatever items that Division of Conservation Services may highlight.
Okay. Just to remind the board on the areas that you bring up in your memo, we talked about the, on page eight, number 13, the parking area, the grantees may develop and maintain one parking area directly abutting Newbury Street to park up to four cars and to provide access to the public trail as defined below. Provided that the parking area shall not be surfaced with impermeable material. And on page 11, access by the public, this conservation restriction also grants to the public the right to enter upon a portion of the premises identified as public trail in exhibit A attached here to for non-motorized passive recreational purposes, including but not limited to walking, jogging, hiking, wildlife observation, mountain biking, horseback riding, cross-country skiing, and snowshoeing. The grantor and their successors and assigned shall permit the continuance of such entry by the public, provided that in connection therewith, one, any such activity shall be limited to daylight hours only unless grantor provides permission for an exception; two, all such activities shall be confined to the limits of the public trail; three, dogs shall be leashed at all times; four, no motor vehicles of any kind shall be permitted; five, no hunting, trapping, or discharge of firearms shall be conducted; six, no dumping, waste disposal, or littering of any kind be allowed; seven, no activity of a commercial nature be allowed; and eight, the public shall adhere to such reasonable rules and regulations as the grantor or grantees may establish and post from time to time regarding the access provided in this paragraph. Grantor or grantees may temporarily close the public trail from time to time as may be necessary in order to conduct property and trail maintenance, forestry and agricultural activities, and other reserved rights that may be incompatible with public use. The grantor hereby reserves the right to alter the locations of established trails after consultation with the grantees and with the grantees' approval, provided that, as so relocated, neither the conservation values of this conservation restriction nor access to in passage through the premises is materially impaired. To the extent permitted by law, the grantor and the grantees hereby expressly disclaim any duty to maintain the premises or warn persons who may enter upon the same. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 21, Section 17(c), neither the grantor nor the grantees is liable to any member of the public for injuries to person or property sustained by such person while on the premises in the absence of willful, wanton, or reckless conduct.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson.
On number 13, parking area, it says the grantees may develop. I'm just concerned that later on in the agreement, it says that the Green Belt can, or the grantees can develop the parking area if they don't within a, whatever the timeframe is. My concern is that I, I would like to have the grantees develop the parking area and not the town. It gives us $5,000, but we have to get involved in bidding and minimum wage...
Can I add to the memorandum of agreement?
Yeah, what page are you on?
Okay, that's a separate document, and we did page one, and number two on the first page. And the memorandum of agreement is incorporated into the ECA office and becomes part of the board, and it's about accepting sole responsibility for the town to install and activate the parking area on the basis of the limited consent of the first amendment.
My concern is that if they don't do that, it says the town, they can, they'll grant the town $5,000 to do that work? And my argument is, I don't want the town doing that work. I would like the agreement to say shall, the grantees shall do it. If we, if the town has to do it, number one, the town administrator's going to do a lot of work for bids. We have to pay the wage, state wage rates, whereas if the, if the grantee does it, they can do it at their, whatever, however they want to get it done. That's my concern, is that I don't want us, I don't want a year from now, us coming back and saying, well, wait a minute, the parking lot isn't built, they didn't do it, and we have to do it. Even though they're going to give us $5,000.
And actually, in a sense, that's sort of a detrimental clause to Essex County Green Belt, and you not want, the board and the board and the not have funding to specifically do that. It's kind of just put in there to have there be some kind of option in case there are circumstances beyond everyone's control, but they have, they have a proper manager, and they have proper management staff to do this.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear that it's their responsibility, and we don't want to see it coming back to us a year down the road or whatever.
It's meant to be an undesirable option, even if it puts the onus on Essex County Green Belt. And they do do that on a regular basis for their other properties, so there's, you know, within the crystal ball that gives us, you know...
No, I understand. I just want to make sure it's clear, and I know Green Belt is here, so I just want to let them know that we're, that's one of our concerns. I have no problem with it otherwise, so it should be fine.
Any other comments?
So, if the board has no issues, the next step would be go to the state for review? So, if the board wants to take a vote just to approve it, knowing that those sections were incorporated at the selectmen's request and the Concom's request?
And the one little thing that just popped up, I was correct, Newbury Street, Newbury Road. I need to move to the other corner.
Second. Motion is made, seconded, submit this to the state for review and approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, and thank you for supporting us.
It is very close to 7 o'clock. We have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Board of Water Commissioners. This is an informational hearing on the April 30, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant and the April 30, 2018 Special Town Meeting Warrant. Chairman Perry calls for a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Board of Water Commissioners by order of a roll call vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Do you need a motion first?
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call.
I, Robert Snow.
I, Joseph Perry.
I, Chris Pierce.
I, Dave Peterson.
I, Robert Murray.
Chairman White.
I call for a joint meeting of the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Water Commissioners to order. Have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, signify by a roll call vote. I, Larry White.
I, Sharon Emery.
I, Paul Jelbit.
I, Dennis Murray.
Call a meeting of the water board to order. Take a motion to open a joint session?
Your motion.
Seconded.
All in favor by roll call?
I, John M.
I, Robert Cole.
I, Mark Emery.
The informational hearings on warrants start. Again, let's establish some ground rules. If you wish to speak, we're going to use the microphone to my left, and so that it will be recorded. This meeting is being video and audio recorded by Raleigh Community Media. It is not being shown live. It will be shown at a future date. Please state your name and address when you speak. If you're getting up to agree with somebody who has previously spoken, and you're in agreement with what they have proposed, please do not repeat so that we can keep the meeting going and get through all of the items. Just say that you do agree. I do want people to be recorded, if they wish, on the, by the video and audio recording, so that they will be a member, a part of the recording for this session of the Board of Selectmen and the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Water Board. I hope everybody has picked up a meeting, a copy of the warrants. We'll start with the warrant for the special town meeting. And again, if you just raise your hand and then come up to speak. Article one is to hear and act on reports of the committees and boards, which is our normal article. Article two is very important, could become important later on, to see if the town will vote to suspend the town meeting, in the town meeting, the application of section 19 and 20 of the Town Meeting Bylaw pertaining to reconsideration of all money articles, such as suspension intended for specific purpose to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, and to give blanket warning hereby that any money article may, at the end of the meeting and after all articles have been acted upon, be moved for reconsideration in order to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), or taking any other action relative thereto. It is important for everybody to understand that we have to have a balanced budget. We have to match our income with our expenses. That has to be balanced. And so, if at the end of the town meeting, we are not in balance, then we, there will be a further consideration, and we will have to rebalance the budget. So, that may come into play, we don't know. Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $5,000 from line 157, unemployment of Article four of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to be added to line nine, selectmen's expense of Article four of the May 1, 2017, to pay for the expenses incurred to hold the April 30, 2018 Annual and Special Town Meetings. This article provides the funds to pay for our annual and special town meetings. Article four, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $4,868 from free cash to cover the costs for the town's participation in the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission Pictometry Program. These funds will cover the cost for the town's continued participation in the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission's Digital Aerial Photography and Pictometry Program. Several town departments use this program as an aid in land use planning, locating utilities, locating wetland resource areas, and stewardship of the town conservation land. Article five, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $3,000 from free cash to be added to Article nine of the special, of the May 1, 2017 Special Town Meeting, library door opener. This was inserted by the Board of Library Trustees, and the May 1, 2017 Special Town Meeting appropriated $6,000 for the purchase and installation of an automatic door opener at the library. The amount appropriated was not sufficient to cover the actual cost. Passage of this article will provide the library director with sufficient funds to complete this project. The automatic door opener will be installed at the side entrance to the library. The automatic door opener will assist many library patrons who have mobility issues in entering and exiting the building. Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $3,800 from free cash to be expended by the chief of police for the purpose of sending a police officer to the police academy in fiscal year 2018. This, a new police officer has been appointed to fill a recent vacancy caused by a retirement. This article funds the cost to send this new police officer to the full-time police academy, which begins this spring. The cost includes the tuition and the purchase of necessary equipment and materials. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $1,836.57 from free cash to the E-911 grant fund to reimpul- E-911 grant fund to reimburse shortfalls from the state E-911 grant in fiscal year thirteen, fiscal year fourteen, fiscal year fifteen, and fiscal year sixteen. This was inserted by the police chief. The E-911 grant is a state grant, and that requires the town to pay upfront for 911 dispatcher training and wages, and then file for reimbursements of these expenses. The grant would not cover the following grant-related expenses, excuse me, three five hundred dollars and seventeen cents. Could you take over for me on that?
Whereabouts are we?
Five hundred and one dollars?
Five hundred. Okay, five hundred and one dollars in FY thirteen, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents in FY fourteen, four hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents in FY fifteen, and forty cents in FY sixteen. Also, due to clerical error, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents was debited from E-911 grant in FY fifteen, but should have been paid from the police department wage line. The town was not notified about the grant shortfalls until after the end of the respective fiscal year, years, and these amounts subsequently rolled over into future years. Since FY sixteen, the state's timeliness of notifications at the end of each fiscal year has improved. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars from Article seven of May first, two thousand seventeen's Special Town Meeting to line sixty-one, police department wages of Article four, FY eighteen operating budget of May first, two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting, and to transfer and appropriate the sum of fifty-five thousand from line fourteen, collective bargaining reserve of Article four, FY eighteen operating budget of the May first, two seventeen Annual Town Meeting to line sixty-one, police department wages of Article four, FY eighteen Annual Operating Budget of May first, two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of funding the cost items of the first two years of collective bargaining agreement between the, between the town meeting for the purpose of funding the cost items of the first two years of collective bargaining agreement between the town and Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local three sixty, covering the period of July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Should I go for the explanation, or?
No, hold on.
Go on, next one. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash to be used by the tree warden for public shade, tree cutting and maintenance, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Selectmen and tree warden. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of four thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars for free cash to Article twelve of the May nineteen ninety-eight Annual Town Meeting landfill testing to cover the cost of testing the landfill this spring, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate ten thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents to pay part of the cost of new security and fire alarm systems for the town hall and town hall annex, and fire alarm systems for the library, highway department, plantation drive, and current fire station on Hammond Drive, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended, unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of facilities upgraded until, under Article nine, paragraph two of the May fifth, two thousand fourteen Special Town Meeting, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of projects for which they were borrowed, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate four thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents to pay part of the cost for new security and fire alarm systems for the town hall and town hall annex, and fire alarm systems for the library, highway department, plantation drive, and current fire station on Hammond Street, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of facilities upgrades under Article eighteen, paragraph three of the May fourth, two thousand fifteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the project for which they were borrowed, or to take any other action relative thereto. This was inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars to pay costs of repairing and repaving the town launch ramp, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of facilities upgrades under Article eighteen, paragraph three of the May fourth, town, two thousand fifteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the project for which they were borrowed, or to take any other action relative thereto. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents to pay part of the cost of replacing the carpet in the Board of Selectmen's office, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of facilities upgrades under Article eighteen, paragraph three of the May fourth, two thousand fifteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the projects for which they were borrowed. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate eight thousand five hundred dollars to pay costs of repairing and replacing garage dual lifts and panels at the Highway Department Garage, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of facilities upgrades under Article eighteen, paragraph three of the May fourth, two thousand fifteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the projects for which they were borrowed. This is inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents to pay part of the cost of purchasing a trailer for the Harbor Masters twenty-one-foot Boston Whaler Patrol Boat, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from unexpended amounts borrowed to pay costs of departmental equipment under Article twenty, paragraph two of the May second, two thousand sixteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and Article twenty-three, paragraph three of the May first, two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of the projects for which they were borrowed, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article seventeen, to see if the town will transfer and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars from free cash to be expended by the following departments as listed below for the purpose of undertaking the following capital purchases and improvements. One, eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for technology upgrades for the following: purchasing and installing computers, software programs, portable radios, and other technological upgrades for the following departments: treasurer, collector, selectmen, health department, assessors, accounting department, fire department, library, and police department. Two, thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars for the purchase of departmental equipment as follows: trailer for the Harbor Master Patrol Boat, a line painter for the Highway Department, new furniture and window treatments for the Council on Aging, and protective clothing for the Fire Department. Number three, thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars for facilities upgrades as follows: the purchase and installation of carpeting for the selectmen's office, new hardware for the town hall handicap door, and for the painting, the town hall cupola and trim, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, you got a question?
Sorry. Question?
I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm just looking into the floor.
Oh.
I don't usually speak at places like this, but I was looking over, the money that this town spends is ridiculous. So my question is, you want thirty-two thousand six hundred, and the carpet supposedly costs nine thousand dollars to replace it. I don't know how big the room is, but I can imagine. I did my whole house for less than seven thousand dollars. So my question is, when we do this, do we get estimates on this? Several estimates? Or it's just somebody come in and say, "I'll do this for ten thousand," and that's the bid we take?
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know how the town operates with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Because that seems like an excessive amount of money, nine thousand dollars to install a carpet in the selectmen's office.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, what we, what these, what this is part of the capital budget. What happens is these, this money is appropriated for a number of things, including the carpeting. The carpeting includes not only the tearing up and installation of new carpeting, but we have to have a mover come in and move all the desks, all the, all the equipment.
Yes, I had done in my house.
Move it out, and then move it back in again. So that, that ups the cost.
But I just find that excessive.
Please, don't interrupt. Let one person sock it a tie.
So that ups, that ups that cost. Plus, we have to pay prevailing wage rates, which you don't pay when you have work done in your house. So that, that puts the price up.
So I, I can't.
On top of that, that article includes repainting all the town hall trim, which is in very, very poor condition, as well as the copula, which is starting to peel.
I understand that. My question was the nine thousand dollars for carpeting.
It goes out to bid. We have, we have to put that out to bid, so a little bit will get.
Okay, because that just seemed excessive to me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of six hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars from the Water Department free cash to the Water Department Stabilization Fund, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Water Commissioners. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of ninety thousand dollars for, from the Article twenty-four of the May second, two thousand sixteen Special Town Meeting, water treatment plant dehumidification system to fund the cleaning of well number three and the wells in well field number five, inserted by the Board of Water Commissioners. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars from Article twenty-four of the May second, two thousand sixteen Special Town Meeting, water treatment plant dehumidification system, to Article sixteen HVAC system for four oh one Central Street of the May first, two thousand seventeen Special Town Meeting, to be used for the purpose of purchasing and installing an HVAC system at the Water Department Administrative Building at four oh one Central Street, inserted by the Board of Water Commissioners. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars from Article twenty-four of the May second, two thousand sixteen Special Town Meeting, water treatment plant dehumidification system for the purchase and installation of insulation for the water treatment plant process pipes. This was inserted by the Board of Water Commissioners. Article twenty-two, did you have a?
Bar Petrello, nine sixteen Haverhill Street. That insulation on the pipes at the water treatment plant, I made that recommendation probably two years ago, and nothing's ever happened. It's about time something did. It's a lot cheaper than doing the big AC job.
Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from the PEG, P-E-G Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for expenses to support the cable television PEG access services and programming, and for renewal of the cable franchise licenses, including any associated expert and legal services, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate our reserve from the Community Preservation Fund, fiscal year two thousand eighteen Annual Revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Summary of recommendations by category: Reserve, creation in support of affordable housing. Original appropriation, twenty thousand seven sixty-eight, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Additional allocation, three thousand six hundred fifty dollars and eighty-three cents, for a total allocation of twenty-four thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Reserve, creation in support of historical preservation. Additional allocation, two thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Administration, original appropriation, twenty-five thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars fifty-nine cents. Additional allocation, one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars forty-two cents, for a total allocation of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars, inserted by the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer and appropriate the sum of nine thousand seven hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to be used by the Conservation Commission to build a boardwalk on the Pingree Farm Conservation Area to provide walking access to the state forest, inserted by the Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to rescind Article thirteen of the November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen Special Town Meeting, and to vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Funds Amount to enable the town of Raleigh to acquire a perpetual conservation restriction on the land known as Mahaffey Farm for conservation, open space, and passive recreation purposes, comprised of twenty-eight point eight three six acres, more or less located at one seventy-nine Newbury Road in Raleigh, Massachusetts, and shown as restricted on a plan of land on file with the town clerk titled Conservation Restriction Plan in Raleigh, Mass., prepared for the Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., by Donnie U. Survey, Inc., dated February fifth, two thousand eighteen, that said conservation restriction is to be conveyed to the town of Raleigh, acting by and through its conservation commission under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight C, as it may be amended, that the conservation restriction is to be managed and controlled by restriction is to be managed and controlled by the Raleigh Conservation Commission and the Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc. This was inserted by the Board of Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, and the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to Article twenty-one of the November thirteenth, two thousand six special town meeting. Town Hall Windows, two, to be used by the Board of Selectmen to complete the town hall window project. This was inserted by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer the, and appropriate the sum of two hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to be used by the Board of Selectmen for Phase One of the Town Hall Annex Elevator Construction Project. This was inserted by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer and appropriate the sum of fifty-four thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to be used by the Board of Selectmen for the replacement of the handicap ramp at the town hall. This was inserted by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer the care, custody, and control of two parcels of municipal land located at land off Meadows Lane, shown on Raleigh's Assesums Map as map fourteen, parcel three, lots two and three, containing approximately five point eight-two-five acres, and deeded to the town on April twenty-third, nineteen-ninety-six, recorded at Book one-three-five-two-two, page one-ten, from the Board of Selectmen to the Raleigh Conservation Commission for conservation purposes as authorized by General Laws, Chapter forty, Section eight C, as it may from time to time be amended and subject to the purposes and protections of Article ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These municipal parcels are shown as parcel W and parcel X on a plan entitled "The Meadows at Stony Brook," a subdivision in Raleigh, Massachusetts, prepared for North Shore Financial Services, Sheet two of ten, by Merrimack Engineering Services, Inc., dated revised September twenty-eighth, nineteen-ninety-two, recorded in the Essex Registry of Deeds at Plan Book two-eighty, page seventy-five. This was inserted by the Conservation Commission. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to amend the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw, the bylaw, by, number one, deleting Section four point four point three; two, redesignating current section four point four point four as new section four point four point three; three, adding a new paragraph C, denoted by underlined text, under the new section four point four point three, which lists the uses permitted in the outlined zoning district with planning board special permit as follows. Section C, large-scale solar photovoltaic installations, subject to the issuance of a special permit by the planning board in accordance with Section eight point nine. Number four, modifying Section four point five point two, Section E of the bylaw, uses permitted in the coastal conservation district to remove the strike-through text and to add the underlined text as follows. E, large-scale photovoltaic installations, subject to site plan review, striking that approval, adding approval of a special permit by the planning board in accordance with Section eight point nine. Number five, adding a new Section eight point nine, large-scale solar photovoltaic installations under Section eight point O, special requirements of the bylaw, which reads as follows. Eight point nine, large-scale solar photovoltaic installations. Eight point nine point one, the purpose of this bylaw is to establish the minimal standards to be implemented as determined necessary by the planning board in conjunction with a special permit and site plan review criteria, so as to minimize the impact of large-scale solar photovoltaic installations, LSSPVI's, on abutting properties to minimize the view of LSSPVI's from public rights away and to maximize the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Section eight point nine point two, all solar panels, buildings, structures, and equipment related to an LSSPVI shall be set back at least one hundred fifty feet from a public right of way and at least one hundred fifty feet from any property boundary shared with a residential use, except that the planning board may waive this requirement if it determines that a reduced setback would be consistent with the purposes of this bylaw. Eight point nine point three, an applicant shall demonstrate to the planning board satisfaction that the proposed LSSPVI will have minimal visual impact on abutting residential uses and on the public's right of way, rights of way. The planning board shall have the discretion to require visual screening in the form of fencing in or vegetative landscape as necessary to adequately minimize such visual impacts. Eight point nine point four, in the event that operation of the LSSPVI ceases, the LSPVI owner shall, within ninety days of the cessation of operations, remove the LSSPVI. The LSSPVI owner shall be responsible for the work associated with the removal of the LSPVI and the subsequent site restoration. Eight point nine point five, the planning board shall have the option to require that the applicant post a bond to cover the cost of removing the LSSPVI prior to approval of the special permit application. If the LSSPVI owner has not removed the LSSPVI within the ninety-day period prescribed by Section eight point nine point four, the town shall authorize, shall be authorized to use the posted bond funds to commence the removal. At the time of special permit approval, the applicant shall provide evidence of written authority from the record owner, owners of the subject property to bind successors in a signs to permit the town to enter the property in order to carry out said removal, inserted by the planning board. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw, the bylaw by, one, adding the following new definitions to Section two point O of the bylaw entitled Definitions. Independent marijuana testing laboratory, a laboratory that is licensed by Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission and is qualified to test marijuana in compliance with regulations promulgated by said commission. Marijuana cultivator, an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments and to transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivator, independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business. Marijuana product manufacturer, an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, and package marijuana and marijuana products, to deliver marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments and to transfer marijuana and marijuana products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Marijuana products, the products that have been manufactured and contain marijuana or an extract from marijuana, including concentrated forms of marijuana and products composed of marijuana and other ingredients that are intended for use or consumption, including edible products, beverages, topical products, ointments, oils, and tinctures. Marijuana retailer, an entity licensed to purchase and deliver marijuana and marijuana products from marijuana establishments and to deliver, sell, or otherwise transfer marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments and to consumers. Number two, adding the following new section, four point six point three, Section O. Section O, marijuana retailers approved in accordance with provisions of Section four point one-three. Number three, adding the following new section, four point seven point three, Section L. L, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana cultivators, and independent marijuana testing labs approved in accordance with the provisions of Section four point one-three. And four, adding the following new provisions as Section four point one-three of the bylaw. Four point one-three, marijuana not medically prescribed. Four point one-three point one, applicability, this section shall apply to all marijuana establishments as defined in Section two point O, provided that nothing in this section shall be deemed to apply to any registered marijuana dispensary or to prevent the conversion of a medical marijuana treatment center licensed or registered not later than July first, two thousand seventeen, engaged in the cultivation, manufacture, or sale of marijuana or marijuana products to a marijuana establishment engaged in the same type of activity under General Laws, Chapter ninety-four G. Four point one-three point two, prohibition, except as specifically permitted by this section, marijuana retailers, marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, independent testing laboratories, and other marijuana establishments as defined in Section two point O may not be located in any zoning district of the town. Four point one-three point three, retailers, marijuana retailers may be located in the retail district with a special permit issued by the planning board, provided that such use may not be located within two hundred feet of a daycare facility, elementary or secondary school, or church or religious assembly, and provided that the planning board has approved a site plan. Four point one-three point four, product manufacturers, cultivators, laboratories. Marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana cultivators, and independent marijuana testing laboratories may be located in the business light industry district with a special, special permit issued by the planning board, provided that such use may not be located within two hundred feet of a daycare facility, elementary or secondary school, or church or religious assembly, and provided that the planning board has approved a site plan, inserted by the planning board.
Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law C six, sixty-four N, Section three, providing that imposition of a local sales tax upon the sale and transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by marijuana retailer operating in the town to anyone other than marijuana establishment, and to set the amount of such tax at three, at three percent of the total sales price received by marijuana retailer as a consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products, or to take any other action relative thereto, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw, the bylaw by modifying the definition Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, under Section two point zero of the bylaw entitled Definitions by removing strike-through text and by adding bold underlined text as follows, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, and, and strike, a not-for-profit entity, entity registered by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health under one-oh-five CMR seven-twenty-five dot one hundred, that acquires, cultivates, processes, processes, um, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctured aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana-related supplies or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers unless otherwise specified. RMD refers to sites of dispensing cultivation and preparation of marijuana, inserted by And that is the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Well, go in.
I'm sorry, you're in the special town meeting.
We'll start with the warrant for the annual town meeting, and again, I would ask you to remember that this is an informational hearing, and no votes will be taken. The votes will be taken next week at the town meeting at the Pine Grove School Gymnasium, not in the all-purpose room, because you can't get into the all-purpose room right now. Article one, to hear and act on reports of committees and boards, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Again, Article two, to see if the town will vote to suspend the town meeting, the application of Section nineteen and Section twenty of the town meeting bylaw pertaining to the reconsideration of all-money articles, such suspension intended for the specific purpose to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, Proposition two and a half so-called, and to give blanket warning hereby that any modern articles may, at the end of the meeting and after all articles have been acted upon, be moved for reconsideration in order to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. And again, I want to offer one caution, that we are required under Massachusetts General Laws to provide a balanced budget at the end of the town meeting. And so if by the, before the town meeting can adjourn, if the budget is not balanced, then we will have to reconvene after working through, giving the various boards a chance to rebalance the budget, we will call for another town meeting, a continuance of the town meeting to present the rebalanced budget. Article three, to see if the town will vote to fix the annual compensation of elected officers of the town as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-oh-eight, as follows. Elected officer moderator requested one hundred dollars. Finance committee recommends one hundred dollars. Board of Select- Board of Selectmen, each member $2,231. Finance committee recommends $2,231. Board of assessors, each member $2,456. The finance committee recommends $2,456. Town treasurer, collector of taxes, $79,021. Finance committee recommends $79,021. Town clerk, $55,515. The finance committee recommends $55,515. Planning board, each member $0. Finance committee recommends $0. Surveyor of highways, $76,733. Finance committee recommends $76,733. Municipal water board, each member $0. Finance committee recommends $0. Trustees of the free public library, $0. The finance committee recommends $0. Raleigh Housing Authority, $0. The finance committee recommends $0. Board of shellfish commissioners, each member $500. Finance committee recommends $500. Municipal light board, requested $0. Finance committee recommends $0. Board of cemetery commissioners, chairperson only, $500. Finance committee recommends $500. Article four. General omnibus budget. Larry?
What I'm going to do is read the article, give you hopefully an explanation of the article, and then we'll take questions in the format that it's like presented at the town hall. In other words, we'll go through the budget, like for the general government items, one through 63. Are there any questions? We'll take them in that order. We'll make note of it, and then at the end, okay, Chairman Perry will go back and answer the questions or get someone to answer the questions. We'll keep it in that format. For this article, we want to concentrate on the Raleigh assessment for the Triton School. If you have questions as far as what if Newberry or Salisbury, that's more of Article Five. We'll address those questions in Article Five. So to keep it simple, we're going to look at only what Raleigh can change. Not going to worry about the other towns. Okay? In summary, if you are for the full Triton School budget, remember yes, yes, yes. If you are for the limited Triton School budget, you remember yes, yes, no. Now, bit of a background in history, and let me explain that. State permits a 2.5% tax levy increase and anticipated new growth for the budget increases. In December 2017, and for Raleigh, the Board of Selectmen sent a letter to Triton with a proposed Raleigh assessment increase of $200,000 based upon a 2.5% increase of $341,209 and new growth of $56,560. That totals $397,769, half of which is $198,884. Or Raleigh rounded it up to $200,000. Triton's final budget of March 14 had a Raleigh assessment of $732,640, or more than three and a half times the amount Raleigh said we could afford. Okay, now, think of Articles Four and Five as parts A and B of the budget. Article Four has the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen recommended budget, which is the fiscal '19 budget with the $200,000 increase for Triton. Approving Article Four approves the Raleigh omnibus budget. However, Triton has a $532,640 shortfall. Article Five approves and sets aside this spending shortfall. Should this shortfall on Triton's budget get a override pass as ballot question one. In other words, Raleigh's budget is still balanced at that point. The $200,000 in Article Four and the $532,000 in Article Five were determined by what the town could afford. We went in December and said, this is what we think we can afford. We went through the budgeting process, and we can still afford the $200,000 increase. Raleigh's budget remains balanced. And what we've done is put in the Article Five, okay, for the desire of the residents to have the opportunity to vote for an override. If you've watched the district communications meetings, the Raleigh budget meetings, there was an effort to have the citizens vote on an override, even though the chairman of the Board of Selectmen for each of the three towns said they cannot afford an override, and an override probably won't pass. But at the will of some of the people, okay, we have the override. The shortfall has two parts, okay? One is approving the funding source in Article Five, and then raising taxes to fund the override in the ballot question. The ballot question appears on the ballot regardless of the outcome of Article Five at the town meeting. You can vote yes, you can vote no. It doesn't make any difference. The ballot question is still on there. Now, for Triton's budget to be fully funded, Article Four must pass the town meeting, and Article Five must pass a town meeting. And the override ballot question must pass. In summary, for Article Four, Article Five, and the ballot question, if you are for the Triton full $732,000 assessment budget, you vote the yes, yes, yes. If you are for the Triton limited $200,000 budget, you vote yes, yes, no. Very simple, okay? Article Four and Five, whether you're for or against it, you vote yes. The difference is at the ballot, whether you vote yes or no. On the ballot question, if you vote the yes, you have a permanent tax increase. If you vote no, then Triton has to reconsider their budget. We won't take questions yet. Now, Article Four, the general omnibus budget is to see what sums of money the town will vote and raise and appropriate or transfer and appropriate from available funds, including overlay and free cash, to defer the expenses of the town for the forthcoming fiscal year, including bonds, notes, interest. So now we'll go through the general sections. And if you have a question on Triton, there's a section for it, and you can, we'll put a hold on that section, and we'll come back and answer questions. Okay, are there any questions or holds on line items one through 63, the general government? Yes, there's a, which line item?
I don't know if I would ask you appropriate. I want to know if, what it means by limited budget, what's being taken out of Triton. Is there some place that it says that information?
We'll put a hold on that and address that after we go through the budget items right now. But right now, we're only looking at budget items one through 63. I think the Triton budget is...
Ninety-seven.
Ninety... Ninety-nine. Are there any questions on one through 63?
Excuse me, if you have a question, please move to the podium, identify yourself, and then, so everyone can hear the question. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, public safety. Line items 64 through 96. Are there any holds on it?
34 Pleasant Street, Raleigh, Mass. Someone who, in a past life, worked in public safety as a Boston EMS EMT. But considering the crunch that we're in and the priority that I personally have having two kids in the Triton District, I'm concerned about the near doubling in line item 71, firefighter wages. So I'd like more information about what's driving that. Thanks.
Currently, there's almost five firefighters in the town of Raleigh, three of the full-time, myself, one of them, and two captains. We were hired in 1997. We're not, that was 21 years ago. We're not 21 years younger, we're 21 years older. I've got arthritis in my knees, I've got bad shoulders. I can't do what I did 21 years ago. I'm not going to speak for the captains, but they're the same board on them. We're close to retirement age. We need to have transition of information so that when we retire, the Raleigh Fire Department can continue. The 20, two call firefighters have their own lives, their own jobs, and their family. They don't know all the ins and outs of what goes on in the fire department. They don't have the time to learn it. So what we're looking for is to hire two additional full-time firefighters with the transition. Also, our call demands have increased since we were hired 21 years ago. We're the only town in the area that only has three full-time firefighters, and we're the only town in the entire county where a fire chief rides on the fire truck every day. That's why the double of the wage line, 71 for firefighters.
Okay, are there any other questions? Excuse me?
Can I just add to that in support of the chief? In other words, you've got to understand that at night or after hours...
Excuse me?
At night or after hours, one of the full-time firefighters responds, and the call firefighters fill in the gaps. We're having a problem, and we've had a problem for a number of years now. On holidays, nights, and weekends, many of the call firefighters who are out of town are unavailable. So you're going to get calls where maybe two firemen show up. It's unsafe for the firemen. It's obviously unsafe for you if your house is on fire or you've got a severe medical or disaster situation. So we need to increase the number of firefighters as a public safety prerequisite so that the town is properly covered. We've stretched to the limit that the fire chief has requested these additional firefighters for the last five years. We keep putting him off, and we said this year we've just got to do it because of the circumstances being what they are. We need two additional full-time firefighters to... And even that's not going to really cover the town the way we'd like to, but at least it'll put a, start to put a little dent in the deficit that we have for firefighting. So it's really a public safety issue.
Do you have a comment?
Could you come up to the...
Hi, Barbara Loftus-Nelson, 24 Farnham. My question is to you, so this, the increases to fund two full-time positions, will it decrease any of your temporaries or your per diems? So they will still be...
There's still call firefighters. What a call firefighter is, we have a call, they respond, they take. If they don't come to a call, they don't get paid.
Okay, thank you, I just want to clarify.
Anybody else?
Okay, moving on, items 97 through 101, which includes the Triton assessment. Are there any questions on the Triton budget as it relates to Raleigh? Okay, public works, items 102 to 113. Are there any questions on public works? Health and Human Services, items 114 to 125. Are there any questions on Health and Human Services? Recreation Historic, items 126 through 136. Are there any concerns on those budget items?
Richard Simlock, 26 Hammond Street. Just line item, gotta put them back on. 131, field maintenance, increase $10,000 for the year. Just was curious what that entailed.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I've been working with the Recreation Committee. It's another department that we've been stripping down in terms of giving them money. Right now, they collect fees from the teams that play baseball, soccer, so on and so forth. They add money to the budget, which is used for field maintenance. We're in the process of designing new baseball fields at the Wynn property, which we bought this past year over behind the Pine Grove School. That's going to require increased maintenance, and just the general cost of maintenance has been increasing at a regular level. And we need the extra $10,000 for that, as well as some repairs needed up at Eris Park for the concession stand up there for electrical work and some plumbing work. And we're just at the point where it's... We've been level funding these budgets for so long. We've just, here and there, and this is one of them, we've added the $10,000 to help us get by. And this is for the kids to run the ball teams and the, all the various sports and athletic associations. And it's just, we need the money.
Okay, are there any other questions on 120? Yes.
Hi, Catherine Chatten, Weathersfield Street. This is actually a question about line item 125, just above. What exactly does that cover, that $190 for ADA complacency?
One line here?
125.
125?
We purchase miscellaneous things like handicap signs and...
That's for the Americans with disability?
I'm aware of ADA. What does it cover?
And so, Debbie?
If we need to replace a handicap sign or add a new one in a new area, in a public area, that's what we use. area, that's what we use that money for.
Okay, there are several items in the articles that relate to ADA complacency that have not been funded or are not currently being funded, is this something where we should be asking for more than a hundred and ninety dollars? Talking about elevators, ramps, buttons for doors?
Those would be capital expenditures, so that's why they're put in those articles. This, this was renamed, we had a handicapped commission, we couldn't find anybody to serve on it, so the, the staff and I, I'll work on just, you know, handicap signs, parking signs, restroom signs, and things like that, that's what those funds were used for, for just general...
Okay.
Small expenditures.
Right.
But the large capital ones are, are set aside, and they're off the budget in those articles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on one twenty-six through one thirty-six line items? Moving on to debt, any questions on one thirty-seven through one sixty-six? No questions going to insurance and benefits, line items one sixty-seven through one seventy. Any questions? Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to you for Article Five.
Thank you, Larry. I would point out that at the town meeting, when the town moderator is running the program, that you must listen carefully for the line items, I have some flexibility here, that if somebody wanted to bring up a line item, I could move it around a little bit, but we will not have that flexibility at town meetings, so listen carefully to the line items on the budget if you have questions, so that you can make, ask your questions and get a response at the town meeting. And again, we're going to be meeting in the gymnasium, not in the all-purpose room, which has already been blocked off because they've started working there. I'm happy to say they're working, it's going. Okay, I just have to flick on my glasses, I had my cataracts done, and it's amazing what you can't see. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars for the purpose of paying its full assessed share of the Triton Regional School District budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen. Required to fully fund such assessment and thereby approve the district's budget for the year, provided that such additional appropriation be contingent, contingent on the approval of a levy limit override question under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C. So passage of Article Five at town meeting has to be followed up by the override at the ballot on May eighth. Any questions, yes?
Dambi Whitmore, Glenn Street, I, can I ask now, what, five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, if that wasn't approved, what would happen to the school, is there someplace in here that it tells what, what is being funded or not being funded if we don't pass this?
Well, no, all we can do is to vote yes or no. What happens is, if the override does not pass, then, then Newbury has to take their vote, and Salisbury has to take their vote. If at least one other town does not pass their override...
Okay.
Two out of the three, then it goes to the Rowley, the Triton Regional District School Committee, they would have to vote to reassess their budget. They could come back with some other figure.
So the, the school budget is, this, there's no place to know, except for like going to the school committee meeting, what's going to be taken in or out of the budget, is, I mean, is there someplace where we can see what they're looking at for this, why this increase is needed?
You'd have to go to the school committee meetings.
Okay, so the...
There, there, I, I'm a frequent attend, attendee...
Do we have a school committee person here?
Superintendent Forge will tell you that he, I'm a frequent tender, and I, and I listening to, and hear their presentation.
So can, so can you tell me then, what, why the increase is needed, and what is going to be lacking without it?
I'd rather not get, you give you a secondhand, my interpretation, I'd rather have you go to the school committee and get their, and listen to their presentation as to what they have to say, they're going to be meeting on it, they continually meet on their budget, and, and if you have a question, Superintendent Forge is here.
Uh, can...
I'll ask him to respond.
Okay, that would be great. And the other thing is, there, were, was a sales tax considered in order to fund this at all? No?
I'm not sure what you mean by, what do you mean by sales tax?
Adding a, a sales tax, or a meals tax, or anything like that, was any of that considered for funding the Triton schools?
We, we can't institute a sales tax, that has to be done by the state legislature. We did vote to add, if, for the Rowley businesses, for the Rowley restaurants, anybody serving meals has to, will be adding on a meals tax.
Okay.
We did vote to increase that, that vote was taken by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me just add to that, that the meals tax or any marijuana tax have not been approved, so those were not in the budget, okay, we don't budget for that. If you are interested, I think from the Triton website, you can get the final version of the Triton regional budget, and you can look at it and determine, or see what they have as priorities, and then I would urge you to start attending some of the Triton meetings, to ask them specific questions. We just, we don't tell Triton how to run their school, we just say, we can't afford the way it is now, just as in any other department, we don't tell the public works or police how to run their department. We might tell them that we can't afford another policeman, or we can't afford this, the department makes the decision on how they are going to use their budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Barbara Stanley, twenty-one Rowley Country Club Road, I just had a question for the Finance Chairman about when he said the taxes would increase if this was passed, do we know what the tax increase would be?
We do have some figures. Is Karen Sullivan here, I mean, Summitt?
Karen Summitt, I'm a collector, based on the five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-dollar override, for the average valued home in Rowley, which is four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, the annual taxes would increase by two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents per year, and that is the permanent override, so that will stay on the tax.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Brian?
Answer that question.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, so just to clarify the question in regards to what happens if the override doesn't pass, as Chairman Perry said, the towns, it has to happen in all three towns, or two out of three towns have to approve it this year with both an override vote and at town meeting, if it doesn't pass in two of three towns, then the school committee has to reconsider the total budget. At this point, the total increase for the final budget was roughly two-point-two million dollars, that's the assessed, the number that resulted in the assessment of seven-thirty-two for Rowley, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand in Salisbury, in a smaller number in Newbury, as they're becoming a smaller part of the district, but we have not determined what those cuts would be. If we were to cut to the number that Rowley had given us back in December of two-hundred-thousand, that would mean we would be able to increase our budget in the vicinity of six-hundred-and-fifty to seven-hundred-thousand dollars, based on the enrollments, so that would be cutting another million and a half out of existing spending. So as Chairman White did say, the budget is posted on the website, Tritonschools.org, if you click on the budget link, the final budget is posted there, along with other documents as well. The final budget does include reductions that was from the initial tentative budget back in February to the final budget in March, on March fourteenth, we came down about seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand in, from that time period, and so those, those cuts are outlined in the budget, that, those, the change from the tentative to the final budget, but the discussion about what those cuts would be if the budget doesn't pass has not been finalized. Literally, those numbers change on a daily basis, as we've had a, quite a bit of discussion throughout the, the budget process this year. This was an extraordinary year, there are certainly costs, as we've had the discussions, in the vicinity of a million to a million and a half dollars each year, this year, the original budget, the initial budget, I should say, was in over three, three million dollars. One-point-two million dollars of that was increased special education costs, those aren't costs we can predict, those aren't costs we can plan for, and so we do our best to work with those, those are federally and state-required services, and we do our best to provide the best services we can with the dollars we have, but those aren't options we have, choices we are able to make, and those are services and programs that the students have a right to and are entitled to, so, those, that one-point-two became about one million dollars, with some changes in the final budget, but if we were to cut down to the number that Rowley had proposed, it would be another million and a half dollars, roughly. What that would look like, obviously, there would be, the original projections were, if we were to cut down to that, it would be in the vicinity of fifty-one individuals, employees, right now, cutting down to, in the vicinity of nine-hundred to a million, we have scenarios, and this has been presented to the school committee, that's still twenty to twenty-five individuals that would lose their jobs, and so I, I can't answer that question concretely because that hasn't been determined yet, but that, we would be prepared to act, the administration being a presentation to the school committee on May sixteenth, their meeting was bumped back one week, so that the final town meeting vote would occur in Salisbury on May fourteenth, and the school committee would be prepared to react, and take whatever action necessary, if required to do so, on Wednesday, May sixteenth, so that is the plan as it stands. Happy to answer other questions in regards to Triton, if there are some.
John?
John Mayan, Hillside Street, first question is for the Selectmen, kind of an uncomfortable question, if it passes in two towns and doesn't pass here, what's the effect, what happens here in Rowley? Now, wait for the second question. Would you want to just ask that, too?
Basically, we'll have to cut five-hundred and, was it five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand?
Five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, sorry.
They can use a scalpel or Med-X?
That's a Med-X. It's very tough to come up with when you got, as you, if you read through the articles we had, it's very tough to cut five-hundred-thousand dollars out of the budget, or we have to dip into like a stabilization fund, which is for emergencies and major projects, so it's a, there'd be a combination of things, but it'll be a huge cut for us if the override doesn't pass, and the police department's going to suffer, the fire department may not get its two men, we had a few other departments that had some relatively small increases.
And that'd be permanent, I mean, it would be...
Yeah, they're permanent until we can, unless we can get another override, it's , we're in a difficult, between the schools and the town, we're, we're all in a difficult situation, it's, there's only so many dollars we have, and we have to divide them up somehow, the more the school takes, and the more difficult it is for us, and at this, this particular year, the school's taken a very large chunk, and we're having a hard time coming up with, that's why we have the, that's why all three towns have the override, to try and bail out the situation, so.
Thank you. Second question, and this, this is completely unfair, you probably may not be able to answer it, however, planning and looking forward, everything goes as desired this year, and things pass and whatnot, the teacher's contract, I think, is coming up in a year or two, are we going to be looking at another override to take care of that, because wages are an enormous part of the budget, and will we be looking at yet another substantial request in town?
So I would say to you that the, the increase for teachers for next year, which is the fiscal nineteen year, is a much larger, it's a two-point-seven-five percent increase, that's a much larger increase than we have historically ever had, that was an increase actually for, hit the term, buying language in the contract, so there was actually additional requirements that are required, required of the teachers in order, or as the basic job requirements, I should say, so that is a one-time, larger COLA, or cost of living adjustment, historically, the raises have been between one and two, two and a half percent, this year, or next year, is the only anomaly, if you look back historically, our teachers are very competitively paid, middle of the pack, not overly paid compared to the region, the committee in negotiating has always aimed to be middle of the pack, want to be average in benefits, average in salaries, so we attract a quality and solid teacher base, but I can say to you, if, if, with all of the average increases that have happened over the last, this is my thirteenth year in central office, we've dealt with the same situation every year without an override. The teacher's contract, and I can't say this enough, is not the cause of this override. Every year, we've had an increase in salaries across the district, four-hundred-and-thirty employees, in the vicinity of nine-hundred-thousand plus, up to a million dollars in, in salary increases, those are steps, that's cost of living adjustments, that's for the entire four-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-and-thirty-five employee organization, so it's not the teacher contract that is causing the requirement for an override this year. If it were just a normal year, and it was teacher contract, or if it was salary increases in an average benefit year, we'd be able to manage the rest of the budget. The budget buster this year was one-point-till-two million dollars in unexpected special education costs that we need to do, we should do, and students are entitled to receive, but that's really the budget buster this year. Healthcare, we've had this discussion ongoing, it's no different for the town than it is for the district, we have renegotiated rates every three years, we have a public employee committee, which is actually, under the statute allows us to aggregate all five of the organizations, the collective bargaining associations, unions, if you will, so all five come together to collectively bargain healthcare, so we've made plan changes, changes to plan design, cost share, we still are higher than the, the share for Rowley employees, but we are spot-on average with the seventy-thirty split with the other two towns within the region, as well as all of the school districts, kind of the north of Boston, which is who we compete with, but that is up, we will be negotiating that next year, teacher's contracts we negotiated for fiscal eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, so we won't be negotiating for another two years, but just to confirm, it's not the teacher's contract that's the budget buster, the sunk expenses as we go from year to year are in that million and a half range, and as a starting point, if we were talking about dividing a million and a half versus three million, this would obviously be a very different discussion, splitting a million, a million and a quarter to a million and a half in three ways, rather than trying to split what was initially over three mil, three million dollars, so, not an unfair question at all, very fair question, and it's certainly one that's come up repeatedly, so I'm glad to have the opportunity to clarify that, if that's not clear, email, phone call, always happy to chat with people, meet with you, talk with you, and same here, if there are other questions, I'm happy to stay here. Um, and same here, I mean, if there are other questions, I'm happy to stay here.
I have a different view of the data and the finances at the school committee, and I'm sure Brian is aware of that. I look at the, um, increases from wages and salary lines for the school, and they are substantially above the, um, 2.75 cost of living, um, because you really do have to factor in the step increases, um, at least for the first 10 or 11 years, depending upon how you read the, um, at the actual contracts. And those contracts are similar for the other employees at Triton Regional School District. When you aggregate up those numbers, the percentage increases on average for the, um, school employees is significantly above what we, what the town has been able to manage and negotiate with other town employees. So, you have, that you need to consider that for many years, the town employees have been getting by with the kind of very limited, within the proposition 2 and 1/2, within that 2 and 1/2 percent. So, plus or minus of, of a little bit. That is not true. Over the last nine years, the last three teacher contracts have blown up proposition 2 and 1/2. So, if you want to hold on to proposition 2 and 1/2, which I think is essential for good fiscal management, then the school contracts have to abide by that proposition 2 and 1/2, including the step increases, including the shifts for increase in, um, in certifications or degrees or college credits, including the increases associated with longevity. All those things have to be rolled in together to look at the overall, um, wage and salary, um, budget, and that needs to be in, within spitting distance, basically, of proposition 2 and 1/2. Otherwise, the school budget is gonna accrue more and more of a share of the, the levy that we have. And we are constrained, but the rest of the town is constrained by proposition 2 and 1/2, and, um, I'm not making any, um, not saying what, what people should vote for in terms of, um, the, the override, but people do need to look carefully at those budget documents and basically kind of use common sense to look at the way these numbers have, um, numbers have shifted.
Thank you.
I would like one last comment, and I would have to say congrats. Um, I appreciate Brian's been very forthright and very open with sharing information and responding in a very timely manner to any questions, um, that I've emailed him, so I do greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
After this comment, you won't have to look at my purple shirt anymore, I promise. Um, look, we're all taking some hard medicine here, right? My concern here is that when we're talking about school needs, you have to overlay it up against the investments that we've made in the capital improvements for the police and fire station. Uh, you look at those, uh, the, the fire station interest in principle, you take that with the, the police, uh, principal and interest for the building, you take that against, um, the increased staffing that's proposed here, and you're easily at the full funding needed for this, for the, um, the increase in the school budget. The issue here is, you get one shot to fund as needed for the students that are in that classroom that year, all right? It's not a capital improvement project that can be deferred and kicked down the road to the time when we can afford the debt service. Right now, the debt service increase that we're looking at, from last year to this year, is about $600,000. All right? You take out of that even what you could attribute to the, the Pine Grove feasibility assessment and the renovation interest, and you're still up over $400,000. Now, we're putting $100,000 back into the, the reserve, and I understand why we're doing that, because we need to preserve our debt rating, but there's that. There's the increase in the staffing, there's the debt service on the, the capital improvement projects, and we're saying we can't afford to fund the services that are needed for the kids in this classroom this year. That's a problem. Thank you.
If I can just respond, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to Bernie, so I don't think it was an explicit question, but, um, certainly Bernie and I have had lots of discussion back and forth. See you tomorrow on Rowley Talks on Facebook. Um, but the, but only if you tag me. So, I just wanted to clarify, just to make sure that people understand what he was speaking about in regards to the contract. So, a contract, and this is standard, whether you go north of the border in New Hampshire, across the entirety of the state of Massachusetts, New England, the way that teacher contracts and pay scales work is, teachers start low and they get a step raise for the first 11 years. So, for the first 11 years, they get a bump up a scale. Once you hit your 12th year, so, once you hit your 11th year, you no longer get any steps. So, whatever the COLA is, 1, 1.5, 2, whatever the number is, that's the only increase a teacher gets for the balance of his or her career from the 11th on through whenever they leave the district, if it's retirement or beyond that. 60, in the vicinity of 65% of our teachers are at that top base, that top step already. So, just to make sure that people are understanding that absolutely, for the first 11, I'm sorry, yes, for the first 11 years, there is both a step, um, increase, and that step is increased by a cost of living adjustment, um, but it's only for the first 11 years, and more than 2/3 of our, uh, teachers are off that scale already. So, that's obviously the largest population we have of employees as teachers with over 250, uh, but for instructional assistants with over 100, custodians, cafeteria workers, and head custodians, all five bargaining units have a step structure, uh, that's very similar to that. So, just wanted to make sure people understood that. Beyond that, to make columns is advanced degrees, credits, there are teachers with multiple master's degrees, doctorates, um, advanced degrees, and that's the way you can make column movement. So, just want to make sure that was clear.
Uh, my name is Jill Schuveland. I am at 6 Homestead Lane, and, um, I just, uh, first off, want to, uh, send my appreciation to the school board. They're working very hard on, oh, sorry. We're working, they're working very hard helping, uh, things progress. Um, and we are here today looking at our town, um, but there, there are things that are impacting this, which is outside of, like, the, you know, the regional, besides just our regional areas, which is the legislators. So, we do need to also keep our eyes on that issue because a lot of the things that they're struggling with is a result of the state actually underfunding, um, not just our school system, but throughout, uh, throughout the, um, Massachusetts, um, entire state. There are many schools that are actually, um, working with their own communities, with the school boards, to look at, um, litigation against the state. So, it's, 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 there are a lot of things happening that I don't know if everyone's aware, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a big thing going. So, they're just kind of trying to think, fill in the holes right now, but they're also trying to solve the problem. Um, I just had a question though on clarification. School choice, I don't really know what the impact, um, uh, that our, our county has for school choice. Looking at different school systems, um, I just don't know how, um, we're positioned to make those decisions because the MasCal, um, school district has no school choice. And Ipswich, um, they told me, I inquired about that as well in the past, and they said that this year, they have closed the school choice completely. So, I, I don't really know what the impact that has, I mean, I'm sure everyone's trying to find something that works, but they did tell me that, I don't know the numbers, but I think if you take someone from out of your school district, um, I think there's like a $5,000 per student, uh, fee, and then that school's responsible for that student. And, uh, it's, I, I wasn't quite sure with the budget, I, I do have a copy, so they, it says, yeah, so they have, yeah, they have, um, the school choice receiving and that, and I just didn't know, you know, if that's something that Triton needs to be looking at, closing that door so that we don't have a continual expense that we can't actually afford? And if the special education, um, gets dropped with a large bill, which again, we would have to assume because we're obliged as a state responsibility, I, I just, it just seems very unfair that, that we're expected to, to assume that price, so.
So, I can answer that. So, school choice is a state program. For every student we bring into the district, we receive $5,000. Every student that leaves the district, we get assessed $5,000. There is actually, uh, it's called a special education increment, so if a student also gets, uh, special education services, we do get, so if a child leaves from Rowley and intends in Ipswich, um, we, we pay the 5,000, but we also pay the special education costs on top of that. To your point, um, we've had a, an up and down battle as a district with school choice. You cannot deny a student from leaving the district, you can only control whether you allow a student in. So, we remain a choice, uh, accepting district. We took the vote again in February, but as I told the committee, and you can go back and watch the tape, um, I said we're gonna be a whole lot more cautious about how we're accepting students. Uh, at one point back in 2007, we had 273 students leaving the district, and 100, and I believe it was about 140, coming, 138 coming into the district. So, we, we were paying out more than a million more than we were receiving. Um, call that the darkest hour. We've now reversed that, and we're in the vicinity of about 150 students coming in, and about 75, I don't have the current figure right now, um, leaving the district, but we're now about twice as many coming in as out. So, it's a cash positive scenario. But in my mind, the perfect scenario is we balance the cost of the students leaving with the students coming in, uh, because it does, there are risks. Once a student comes into the district, they are a district student and are treated as a resident through graduation. So, to say that we will absolutely be more cautious, um, and historically, we've opened choice throughout all the grades. Uh, we're focusing now on, we are accepting applications across all grade levels, but we tend to focus on kindergarten, uh, where students will come in, um, and then be, be a Triton student, uh, for the long haul. But we only accept if we can add a student here or there without really increasing our costs, uh, but then also we get the $5,000 in revenue, so, uh, but we're being much more cautious about that. But that's a good question. At one point, it was a significant drain on the cost of the district, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could, uh, could?
Go ahead.
Could I, uh, just, would you just go back to the, the fire station, and the police station, and also the Pine Grove School? Those are debt exclusion overrides. Once we pay them off, that money comes back to the taxpayer, okay? It's not like as the schools, that, that bill goes, that's there, and every year we pay it. And when it came to the fire station, the police station, I've sat on the board now for, for 10 years. I was alarmed when I went into the, into the fire station, and, and the townspeople saw the tape that was made by the fire chief and the fire, firemen. And, you know, we have a couple of million dollars worth, more than a couple of million dollars worth of equipment, brand new equipment, and we add to it all the time so that, that the safety needs of the town are met. And the same with, we're the police department, and I've gone over the fire department, I've ridden with them, and I've ridden with the, with the police department, you know, and see, you know, what the fire department and the town faces. And the town looked at the Pine Grove School, it needed work, we own the school, that is, that will be a debt exclusion override, just as we did with the library. You know, we built that library, and that library gets paid off, Madden Treasurer?
2021.
2021. So, we're close to that, that will, that money will come back into the taxpayer, so.
Thank you.
Chairman Mayan?
Yes.
Um, you are looking at the, um, the debt schedule in the, um, in the warrant. Um, so in 2017, the town authorized the, uh, building of a public safety facility and also the feasibility study for the renovation of Pine Grove. In 2018, the school renovation was passed at the, um, town meeting and by, um, the voters in the form of an override. These, these are monies that we have borrowed already. This is about, um, about 30% of the total project costs. So, the, these are fixed costs. We can't say, hey, we're not gonna pay our debt. Um, these are projects that are, you know, have contracts, they're in progress, so these numbers are, are there, they're not negotiable. We have to pay them, and they're going to continue to rise as we fully fund these projects. And they cannot be used for anything else, nor can anything in the warrant that says water department or community preservation, those are not available to fund the general budget.
When will, when will say this, I hope, school be paid off? We haven't started paying on it in advance, as you already said.
Correct.
We haven't started paying on the police fire station.
Correct. Other than, we had some short-term debt interest, so if you look at those, um, at those numbers in the warrant, you'll see there's a number for approximately $10,000 and, um, for the, um, feasibility study, and $9,500 for the, um, public safety. So, in fiscal year 18, which is the year we're in now, we borrowed $10 million. Um, you know, we look at the cash flow projections for these projects, and we borrow, um, there are incentives for us to borrow, um, $10 million or less in a year when it comes to municipal financing. So, we've borrowed $10 million, and that will hit your tax bills in fiscal year 19. And that, that assumes that, um, these projects don't go along so fast that I have to borrow money again prior to June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year. So, you're gonna see these hit your tax bills over the course of the next two to three years. And, um, once everything has been borrowed and we received our full reimbursement from the MSBA, you're looking at approximately $2.05 on your tax bill for the next 20 years.
Tax rate.
$2.05 on the tax rate for the next 20 years, once these projects are both completed.
Per $1,000.
Yes, it'll increase the tax rate.
$2.05.
$2,000, $2.05.
One more time.
Yeah, I understood about the fact that this is non-negotiable, that we can't reallocate, uh, our obligations to pay back the debt that we've already authorized. All three projects, I will say, were something that I supported, right? Knowing that it's going to result in a tax increase. The repayment schedule, right? The time span over which we have to endure those higher tax rates in order to pay back the debt that we voted to, uh, to take out in order to fund those projects is something to bear in mind. I heard 20 years. So, understood, um, the, the vice chairman, uh, vice chairman's point, that it will come back. I'll just be a lot older, and I'll have even less hair, okay?
I probably won't be here.
The other point here, just to keep in mind, is the relative size of the increase between what we're talking about to fund this override, uh, versus the increase that we're having, gonna have to endure in order to fund the capital improvement projects that we agreed were a high priority. $2.05 on a tax rate that's currently 14, 14, is that right? 14, 15?
58.
Sorry, 14, 58. May seem small, but it's gonna result in a significant monthly increase. What we're talking about in terms of the increase that we need to fund the override that's being requested here for the Triton District is on the order of about $20 a month, all right? For the average home, we're talking about $227 over the course of the year for the average valued residential property. So, I, I, I don't, I don't have my calculator handy, but I, I would venture to guess that that's nowhere close to a $2.05 tax rate increase. It's about 20 bucks a month. Thank you.
Mr. White?
I just want to point out some things in the Triton final budget. Uh, page seven, this figure, the budget, represents the cost to maintain level services in addition to im- to implement, to implement a few new initiatives that have been identified as a priority. I'm not saying, I'm not going to discuss the merits of it and things like that. Page nine, restoration of late buses, $100,000. Universal full-day kindergarten, $200,000. Discontinuation of student parking fees, $20,000. Reduction of athletic fees and decrease of family cap, $80,000. Restoration of faculty senate stipend, $50,000. Total of $450,000 for level services. Now, if we look at another thing, I don't know how familiar you are with math specialists, reading specialists. The teachers are, have gotten very much praise, I'm not saying anything about them. They have to have at least a bachelor's degree, most of them have master's degrees. In the elementary schools, you're spending, or allocating $466,000 for math specialists and reading specialists. Math specialists being that the teachers with a bachelor's degree have difficulty teaching third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders math. You have to look into these things a little deeper. I'm not going to comment on it. This is not the place to talk about the Triton budget. Triton has their own meetings, this is a Rowley Town Meeting. But, we're not saying that teachers have to be laid off, but the figure that Triton uses for their layoffs is, costs about $45,000 per staff or teacher. If you apply that same standard to Rowley, to make up the 532,000, you're talking about 12 people. That's just for Rowley. It's not counting Newberry, it's not counting Salisbury. It's not really apples to apples, but you're talking 12 people equivalent layoffs. The cost per student in 2005 was $5,613. 2016, it was $10,524. And Triton's level amongst the 340 schools in Massachusetts has been about constant at So, all I'm saying is that, if you're interested, you have to look at the Triton budget. You have to go to the Triton School Meetings and voice your concerns there. This is not the forum for it. We can't do anything about it. All we can do is say, can we afford it or not? If we can't afford it, then, and the other two towns pass it, then we have to cut off people. Triton isn't going to come to our aid and say, well, we feel sorry for you. Not going to happen. This is a town meeting, we deal with town items. We can't do anything about Triton budgets or things like that. Go to the Triton School Meetings. Thank you.
I have a comment to the moderator. Is this a comment?
Just a quick comment.
I agree with you, sir, but the way you just, the way you just highlighted, like, five things, to me, as a listener, it sounded like you were bulking them all together and kind of minimizing it, and kind of questioning, how come a teacher who has a bachelor's degree can't teach third and, third grade, and they needed a math specialist? It's a lot more complicated than that. And I, if we are going to address that in a fair way, please don't make comments that lead us to get a different opinion. Thank you.
Okay, I'll cut you off. We have to go on to other parts of the budget, to the warrant, and we're coming up to the water articles, and I'd like to turn it over to the Water Chairman.
Article six, Water Department Budget, to see if town appropriate the sum of, transfer inappropriate the sum of $2,000, $2,231,430.64 from the Water Department Enterprise, I've taken any action relative thereto. Any questions on the wages and salaries? Expenses?
Again, Marjorie Lottis Nelson, 24 Barnum, can you just elaborate Estegui, line two, Water Department wages? There was almost like a $156,000 increase for the Water Department, or am I in the wrong section?
Were you talking?
I might be in the wrong section.
It's, it's gone up the contracted wages, that's all, from last year.
Well, I'm looking at FYI budget, $4,000, $407,000 roughly, and FYI 17 actual was 25, $251,000.
Yeah, I can, I can exactly, tell you exactly what happened there.
Could you please?
Lack of, lack of employees. We haven't been able to find qualified employees to work for our department.
Right now, I'm paying my water bill to a company in Merrimack and Hampshire. So, who was doing billing at your office?
Because we don't have any, we, the employee that originally was doing the billing.
Okay.
Up and resigned.
Okay.
We were put into a, this is before any of us were on the board.
Okay.
So they had to come up with a solution to do the billing like an emergency. So they went out and got proposals, and they got, that's when they got Penachak to do it. And to, I wanted to change it, to be honest with you, but after researching it, we're better off doing it the way we're doing it.
So, just, just so you understand and bear with me, because...
Yep.
I'm not a frequent visitor to town meetings. The FYI budget, is that what is currently going on now and requested, is what we're, what you're looking for in the future and actual last year's cost?
Fiscal, fiscal 18 budget is what's there now.
So the FYI budget right now, so...
Mm-hmm.
So, last, for, so for FY 17, you spent $251,000, yeah, $251,000, but then the budget went up to $407,000?
The budget didn't actually go up.
Okay, so this is what we're, okay.
That's actually what was spent because of not having adequate employees.
So this increase of 100, about 165,000 will be spent in what manner? I guess, am I understanding the process?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, the confusion lies in that we've been shorthanded on the operation staff.
I understand.
And so what you saw from 17 to 18 was, was an increase in staffing. It's not so much we're increasing the rates, it's just, we, we now, we're spending more because we're able to fill positions.
Okay.
And then for 19, we, those are probably just...
The people that you have.
We've got one more, I think, or two more vacancies.
So, so people should understand, when we put together a budget, we have to project filling all the positions which the state is expecting us to have filled. So we're under requirement by the state to have a primary op, two primary operators and two secondary operators. At the moment, we're operating with only two primary operators. But we have to budget as if we were actually filling those positions. So what you see in fiscal year 17 is the fact that we only have two, we still only have two primary operators and no secondary operators. Going forward, we still have to budget as if we're going to fill. So that's why the fiscal year 18 budget is at 400-plus thousand, even though we haven't filled those positions. But we've got to have, it's...
No, no, I understand that, you have to budget anticipating you're going to fill the vacancy that you have. That's what I, that's what I wanted to know. I didn't realize you were looking into a staff, you know, looking into growth, you know, or filling the staff...
No, not growth.
No, not growth, filling the staff that had vacated, sorry. That's too, that's sorry.
So people need to understand, it's required. So, we would just as soon reduce that headcount, because to save the water rate, save money and produce a lower water rate. But the state has certain requirements that we have to, we don't get really a choice, and it's not negotiable. We're supposed to have those positions, and they're supposed to have full licenses. So we can't, so, one of the things that we've done, because we've had a very difficult time finding and attracting qualified personnel to fill these positions, is we've hired an entry-level person with the intent of, hoping that they will be able to train them up.
Okay.
So that's another issue that was kind of built into this, this budget.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for, thank you for clarifying this one, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other questions? Expenses? Six, seven, and eight? Then other capital expenses? All the way down to, the same as our debt, any of our debts, all the way down to Article Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Water Department Enterprise Fund to the General Fund, the sum of $149,322.11 for the following items. Any other money spent by the General Government on behalf of the Water Department? This is the article where we're paying back the town for the money that, that they pay for us. County retirement, health insurance, life insurance, accountants' fees, treasurer collective fees, audit, and Medicare. Then the next section is, is anticipated revenues. You want me to do Article eight, too, Joe?
Yes, please.
See if town will vote to transfer inappropriate the sum of $60,000 from Article 24 of the May 2nd, 2016 Special Town Meeting Water Treatment Plant Dehumidification System to this article to purchase, for the purchase of a truck, or take any act, any other action relative thereto. Will be replacing 2009 F-350 utility truck, just since its service life is done. Article nine, to vote and transfer inappropriate the sum of $30,000 from Article 24 of the May 2nd, 2016 Special Town Meeting Water Treatment Plant Dehumidification System to this article to fund the replacement. This is actually a typo. It's phase one of the, of the replacement system, it was just to do the engineering. The valves at Prospect Hill Storage Tank, they're, between the old tank and the new tank, it's really a disaster down there. We don't know which valves work, which ones don't. So we need to do some exploration and find out, and eventually replace the valves so they're all workable. Article nine, Article 10, to see if town will transfer appropriate the sum of $9,000 from the May 2nd, 2016 Special Town Meeting Water Treatment Plant Dehumidification to Article nine, for the May 2nd, 2016 Annual Town Meeting Pall Membrane Filters. This is our annual thing, so that when it comes time to replace the filters, we won't have to go and get a huge amount of money, we're just putting it aside. If anybody notices from last year that the price has dropped significantly from the Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer inappropriate the sum of $8,900 from Article 24, May 2nd, 2016 Special Town Meeting Water Treatment Plant Dehumidification to this article to purchase a snow plow. This article is to purchase a snow plow for our backhoe. It'd be a lot easier to get some down some of the dirt roads that we have to do the plowing of snow that trucks are having trouble with. And that's it.
Thank you. Articles 12 through 15 are standard annual articles, and these articles will be voted under one consent motion. Anybody want me to read them through?
No.
Thank you. I would like to note in Article 13, it's for use by the harbor master in accordance with Mass. General Laws, and I'd like to thank the harbor master for his years of service since he's not going to seek reelection. Thank you.
No, it's the Board of Assessors.
No, for the Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors. I'm sorry. From the Board of Assessors. Thank you, Bill. I'm sorry. Don't take the blame for it. Okay, Article 16, we have revolving funds, we have expenditures, Council on Aging, expenditures not to exceed $5,000, Board of Health, $20,000, Parks and Recreation, $30,000, Board of Selectmen, $2,000, Highway Department, $12,000, Shellfish Department, $6,000, Shellfish, $6,000, zoning board, $4,000, Board of Cemetery Commissioners, $20,000, Library, $2,500, Agricultural Commission, $5,000, Harbor Master, $30,000, Board of Selectmen, Impox and Recreation, $20,000, and Records Access, $5,000. These were inserted by the various boards. We will, Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG, the Public Education Government Access Cable and Cable Related Fund, the sum of $71,500 for wages and $40,000 for expenses to support the cable television PEG access services. That's inserted by the Board of Selectmen. The Article 18, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $63,439 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Septic Betterment Loan Program to pay the debt service on the town's loan from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust. Inserted by the Board of Health. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2019, annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee, for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Summary of the recommendations by category appropriations, debt service for Pratt Street Farm Land Acquisition, $199,631.26, debt service for Dodge Reservation Property, $125,650, administration by percent of the total, which is $25,940.36, and reserve, creation in support of affordable housing, $21,936.3, and this is inserted by the Community Preservation Committee. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to accept General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 57A, which makes property tax bills of $100 or less payable in a single installment beginning in fiscal year 2019. Inserted by the Treasurer Collector. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, 64G, Section 3A, to establish a room occupancy excise tax on hotel and motel rooms of 6%. This is inserted by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the, Article 22, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2, to establish a local option meals excise tax, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, the Retiree Health Insurance, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town, Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to the Stabilization Fund, inserted by the Board of Selectmen. Article 25, to meet in St. Mary's Church in the rear Route 1A in Sed Rowley on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at 12:00 noon to act on the following, one selectman for three years, one moderator, three years, one town clerk, three years, one treasurer collector, three years, one highway surveyor, three years, one constable, three years, one board of assessors member, three years, one planning board member, five years, one municipal light board member, three years, one municipal water board member, three years, one cemetery commissioner, three years, one shellfish commissioner, three years, three trustees for the public library, three years each, and one, for a regional school district committee, one Newberry member, three years, one Rowley member, three years, and one Salisbury member, three years. There is a referendum question on May 8th. Question one, shall the town of Rowley be allowed to assess an additional $532,640 in real estate and property, personal property taxes for the purpose of funding the assessment for Triton Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018? That ends the annual warrant. I want to thank all of the department heads for coming tonight in case they have any questions. Hmm? Oh, at the end of the meeting, yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
Three very quick, there are five questions in Article five.
Article five, yes.
Hi, Jean Masher, Weathersfield Street. I raised my hand before that ended, but we moved on, so I'll be very quick, 30 seconds. Question for educational experts here, what is the degree required for public school teachers in Massachusetts, the advanced educational degree? Can anybody answer that question for me?
Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. My second question, has the state funding for education, public education in Massachusetts increased or decreased in the last dozen or so years?
Decreased.
Decreased?
A hundred thousand less than 2019 than we received in 2002.
Okay, great, thank you. Not great, it's terrible. And then, I'm actually going to direct my last question to the selectmen. Could somebody state, when was the last educational override passed in Rowley?
Was it 11?
My understanding is that an educational override is distinct and that it's not for capital building campaign, but it's actually for the educational budget.
May of '07, we passed an override for $590,000 for Triton.
In 2007, and that was?
$590,000.
$590,000.
In 2011, we tried to override for $130,000 and that failed.
Okay, okay, great, so it's been 11 years since we passed that override, 2007.
In that, at 2011, when it failed, we had to cut the budget two and a half percent for the town across the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks everybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like a classification, please, from Karen. Karen, did you say that the debt for Pine Grove renovation and the police and fire stations principle is 20 years?
Yes.
According to the debt budget that was submitted to the Finance Committee, it has the final payments for both of those projects as 2043, which would be 25 years.
Well, what happens is the 20 years is the permanent borrowing, so what has happened is, for example, with the feasibility study, we issued bans of short-term debt for that, and basically what you're looking at is the final payment for the debt that we have issued to date. So that's the $10 million that we borrowed this year. When we borrow next year, next fiscal year, that'll also be 20-year debt, the guidelines come from basic Mass. General Laws that say for buildings, you know, this is kind of the appropriate plan. So, once we borrow another chunk of money, it'll be for 20 years, so it'll be 20 years from when we borrow it until it's paid off. So you're going to see that shift down.
So will the $2.05 that these projects add, will be for 20 years or 25 altogether?
Well, what will happen is in 2044, the projected debt will go down to $1.53, and then in 2045, it will go down to 25 cents. So when we ramp it up, we ramp it off on the other end.
I don't have to worry about that. Thank you, Karen.
Can I ask, we said 205, are you adding to the setting of 14, 58, they were going down to 16?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, plus anything else that changes every year?
Lots of elements change every year. They come with the value of everything in town, all property in town.
And the budget goes up two and a half percent every year, so there's always increases.
And that's subject to interest rate fluctuations, you know, that's saying, okay, you know, today, if we did this today, you know, this is what the impact would be. But, you know, it's all subject to market forces, you know, if the town has to cut a lot of employees to fund the school budgets, that's not going to sit well with the rating companies. If we have to spend our stabilization money, if we're not funding our OPEP liabilities, you know, those are all things that affect borrowing and debt for the town. So, you know, we have a pretty good rating now for a small town, we're a double A-plus. So, but, you know, if we get into a situation where we're not as attractive to rating companies, we're not going to be as attractive to municipal bond buyers.
Those are my concerns, I feel like we're just spending a lot of money that even people in this town have, we don't have to stay within the budget, we just seem to keep moving on what we have to spend in this town. There's a little bit of concern.
Can I make one comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's been a lot of talk, I won't say where, that the Board of Selectmen somehow conspired to have the police and fire station and the new school renovation project all come up at the same time that we need the override. And I just want to go back and look a little bit of history, in 1999, the Board of Selectmen requested a public safety building project for the town of a police and fire station. At that time, the building would have cost $3,994,000. It failed, the override didn't pass. In 2002, the Board of Selectmen went back again and asked for a public safety building. At that time, the cost was up to $4,600,000. It failed. In '04, the idea was that, well, if we just build a police station, maybe people will vote for it. So there was an override for $2,916,000 just to build the police station. It failed. So, time is money, anybody in the construction field, and we're all facing it here, time is money. From the public safety building in 2002 to 2017, it went from $4,600,000 to almost $12 million. If we'd have built the building back then, we'd just about have it all paid off. So the selectmen and the finance people have tried to pass these things. The other thing with the school, and I don't remember what year it is, maybe Brian, Brian knows, I'm going to say six or eight years ago, we tried to do a renovation of the Pine Grove School. We couldn't do it, I think, I believe it was the state said that the school was not bad enough to give us any reimbursement, so they wouldn't okay it. So the school literally had to be falling apart before the state would give us a 50% reimbursement. So, so keep in mind that, you know, we're here trying to work out all these projects, but we're, you people and us, we're residents and we're voters, we determine what's going to be built and what's not going to be built. And keep in mind, at the police station, if you go over and look at it now, it's, it looks like a little pizza hut. If you're concerned about the fire department, call the chief and ask to go over and look at the, at the fire department over there. It was built in 1880 as a dance hall. Fire engines are about to fall through the floor. Go to the Pine Grove School. The fire inspector, a couple of years back, the fire chief said, if you want to plug something additional in over there, you got to unplug something else. There's no, no sprinkler systems, the wiring is horrendous, there's no Wi-Fi, the plumbing is old, I mean, that original school was built back in the 50s. The kitchen that they're using for the cafeteria over there was built back in the 50s and really hasn't been modernized. So we're in a bind, I mean, we, don't get me wrong, we don't want to spend your money or our money either, but these projects have been on the books for many, many years, and it's just by some miracle, we don't understand it ourselves, how the last two years, the town voted for these overrides. But if we didn't get them, I don't know what we would have done for these building projects. So keep in mind that it's expensive, but when you have a good police department, a good fire department, and a good school system, your tax, your tax bill's going to go up, but the value of your house is going to go up. And if you ride around town, I hear all the time that, you know, people are, oh, I got to move out of Rowley, I can't afford to live here. Well, I do a lot of riding, I'm retired, I do a lot of riding around town during the day. Houses go up for sale, within two to three weeks, sale pending sign appears on that house. So we're not doing all that bad here, whether you vote for the override or you don't vote for the override, I'm not going to tell you, that's your, your personal decision to make. But all these town leaders, Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, all these chiefs and people sitting on the sides of the building, we're all living in very tight budgets. The school department has its own set of problems, as Brian Superintendent Forge had said, the special education costs are absolutely killing us, pension costs are killing everybody, healthcare costs, these are all things we have no control over. We wish we, we're not trying to raise the bills, we pay them too, but keep in mind that as you go to the ballot box and you come to town meeting, keep in mind what Chairman White said of the Finance Committee, we need you to vote yes on Article four for the Triton budget, we need you to vote yes on Article five for the override budget, and then when you go into the voting booth on election day, whether you want to vote for Triton or against Triton, that's your personal decision. But we want to make sure that we, we give the citizens of this town the option of whether they want to cut the school budget or cut the town budget or what. So we're all working together, we're all trying on this, and we're asking you your support at town meeting next week to, to get this thing on the ballot, and then what you decide to do is up to you as individual voters. But we've done our job over here, and most of us have been on this board for 10, 15 years, off and on, in my case, and we're here to support the town and make it a better place to live, and it's just a coincidence that all these things happen to come up at once, but we couldn't afford to wait. And if we're funding them, it's going to cost us, and it's going to, it's going to hurt some people. And it's not just the old people, there's young families with kids that are getting by on a paycheck to paycheck, and they may vote against the override because they can't afford it. So I mean, it's just, it's one of those things, we're all in a, our backs are against the wall, we need help from the state, hopefully in the next couple of years, that's going to help us pay off. But the state has reduced its funding for Triton, the amount of money that the town gets back on the cherry sheet from the state is less than it was 15 years ago and all that. Every time the state or the federal government cuts back, you know who pays? We do at the local level, because people want the services. If you don't want the services, don't vote for anything, but if you want the services, we got to pay, and that's the bottom line, thank you.
Just to go back about the fire station, before that we voted for the fire station, we spent, we had a committee that was put together, townspeople, myself, fire chief, and we spent three, three years just looking for the land. We couldn't find land, and that's why we chose the site where we did, right beside the police station, to put, to put the police station and the fire station together, and that saved us money. And then, we turned it over to the Board of Selectmen, if you watched the Board of Selectmen meetings, when we had the architect come in and everything else, we were all adamant about one thing, that was not going to be a monument to the architect, okay? That was going to be a building that was just a fire station, that, and a police station, just nothing extravagant whatsoever. So, I mean, we did due diligence, and I'm, you know, very proud to be with these guys when it came to putting that fire station and the police station together. And Dave, you've done a really good job.
At the end of the hearing, Chairman Perry will call for a motion to close the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Motion?
Give me that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the meeting, the joint meeting. Roll call.
I, Robert Snow.
I, Joe Perry.
I, Dave Peterson.
I, Robert Perry.
Larry?
I have a motion to close the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Board of Wash, Water Commission.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, I'll second.
All those in favor by rolling call. I, Larry White.
I, Sharon Emery.
I, Peter Cincinelli.
I, Paul Gilbert.
I, John Crow.
I have a motion to close the Finance Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion. To adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Call a motion to close the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the Water Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and a roll call vote. Bob Emery, John Manning, big motion to, Mr. Chairman, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.
Article five, town meeting, this is a prior two, Harry, it's all, simply majority vote, do?
Yes.
Hello, could you take, we still have business to attend to, use your gavel.
Thank you.
Just a few minutes.
Okay. Okay. Special Town Meeting warrant. I'm going to start with those three.
Can we assign them at random, I mean, go down the list and?
Just choose.
Does it matter? I mean?
Well, I can assign them unless you prefer.
I don't care, you're just reading it.
Debbie, you're fair, you can assign them.
Do you want me to assign the articles, the motions? I already know what Chairman Perry wants to do, so if you want, I can assign them. Anything that's pertaining to this election. Okay.
Bob says okay, I say okay.
No preference on what you want.
Put them to me.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that?
I'm just going to tell you what you can do.
Okay.
We need two minutes.
Minutes, we haven't adjourned yet.
Minutes?
Yeah, I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes for whatever the date is.
February 26th.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve minutes for February 26th, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I lost my agenda.
Hold on, here it is, Mr. Chairman.
I think you were, you were.
The announcement, nobody cares.
February 26th. Mr. Chairman, I think you should re-vote that, resend that vote, please.
Resend the vote, make a motion to resend the vote.
Vote on the minutes for February 26th.
I make a motion to resend the vote for some reason.
Oh.
Have a, second.
Okay, so I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded for the February 26th.
To resend the vote.
To resend the vote.
Yeah, resend the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for February 26th, 2018, all those in favor say aye.
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 I move that we postpone announcements next week.
Second. Second. I move that we adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded to...